Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of March 5th, 2018. Would you please, I'm calling the meeting to order officially. Would you please stand and join us as we pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in this nation, and to this people.
Thank you, and would the Recording Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Here.
Chair Nichols?
Yes, and I would like to just pause for a second and welcome our new Recording Secretary, Amanda Rosenpeck. Glad you could be with us this evening, look forward to having you assist us through this process. But not to be outdone, we also have a new Community Development Office Supervisor, Michelle McMurtry is also with us tonight. And in the audience observing for the very first time is our new Community Development Deputy Director Kelvin Parker. So, welcome, I understand that he's observing for the first time, the Planning Commission is going to be taking us through the process, I don't know if the next meeting is going to be yours, but shortly thereafter, so we're looking forward to having you with us. Welcome, all of you. Okay, we'll continue on to item number four, a request from continuance of any agenda item, do we have anything to continue? Okay. Public comments, I don't have any public comments cards, does anyone want to speak and hasn't submitted any cards? If not, we'll continue on. Next is the Consent Calendar, and we have item 6A is the only thing on the Consent Calendar, do I have any comments or a motion? Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Consent Calendar be adopted.
Thank you very much. Got it. Now, do we need a second? It says second. I don't think so, okay. Thank you, okay, so are there any further comments? If not, you please prepare us for a vote. Thank you. Next is public hearings, of which we have none, and that will take us to our department reports, and I'll ask Mr. Gilly to start us off, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two study session items as department reports on this agenda. The first is a summary update of recent housing legislation that was passed in Sacramento. With the item is a packet from the League of California Cities that gives a guide to the new housing laws. This walks through each of the new laws of 2017. This was attached to the staff report, and it's not the intent of this verbal report to go through that in any level of detail, but to provide you with all that information. The purpose of this report is to go into detail on laws or changes to laws that will have more of an impact on the Planning Commission's review of housing as well as the city's review of housing. The first in that category is SB 35, which arguably was the most controversial of the new laws. This law created a scenario that reduced local control of housing projects rather significantly. It creates a process where a housing project could go through a ministerial process, which is more similar to a building permit or a construction permit than a discretionary process, which is the process the Planning Commission goes through in most of your actions. The caveat is that only certain projects can qualify for that process. There's a longer list in the League Guide than I'm showing on the screen, because we're focusing on the ones that are truly going to affect the City of Thousand Oaks. The first factor in the ministerial process is where the jurisdiction is with its regional housing needs allocation, what our progress is in meeting our housing element objectives. There are three categories, if you fully meet all your housing element objectives, then you don't have to worry about SB 35 at all. If you have partially met your housing obligations, in particular, you've met the moderate income new housing units, then a project would have to be at least 50% affordable in order to qualify for a ministerial process. If you have met, if you have met neither your moderate nor your low-income targets, then any project that provides 10% or more as affordable qualifies for a ministerial process. That's pretty significant, because basically any project that asks for a density bonus is likely to have about 10%, so that could mean if you're a city that hasn't met your moderate income target, a great number of projects could go through a ministerial process. Thousand Oaks has achieved sufficient progress, we have fully met our moderate income target, so a project would have to be 50% affordable for it to request a ministerial process with Thousand Oaks. Another key factor that was added to the legislation was that this process could not be used if the site had had residential tenants on it for the last 10 years. The state put that in, or the author put that in, because they didn't want this ministerial process to be used to tear down older apartments and build newer apartments, the newer one likely having higher rents. So, if a site has had a tenant in the last 10 years, then it has to go through the normal Also, the project would have to pay prevailing wages, those are public projects or public works projects, or projects that get state or federal affordable housing funding already do pay that, but most private projects don't do that, so that's an additional cost. And lastly, the developer has to ask for it. A developer may choose to go through the regular process and not have to follow all these factors. And all of this assumes the site already has a general plan and zoning that allows the housing. So if someone is asking for a general plan amendment to take something from commercial or industrial to housing, then this is off the table. But if a city had a lot of high-density housing that was not built or was vacant, this could come into play. As stated in the reports, you know, the city does not have a lot of that type of land available. Also, it would have to be at least 50% affordable or higher, so staff actually believes that the likelihood of this, likelihood of a developer asking for a ministerial process is relatively low, but it is still important to note that this is still a major piece of legislation, because it opened the door to the state putting a pretty strong limit on local control. As we get later in the presentation, we'll talk about future laws, including a bill being proposed by the same author of SB 35. So moving on from SB 35, want to talk a little bit about the Housing Accountability Act. The title of the act does tell a lot of what the state's intention is. This was originally actually passed in 1982, so there's been an emphasis on building new housing for quite some time, but it's been recently amended, and the three new bills in 2017 do have an impact on the city, though there's actually a prior amendment to the bill had a more substantive impact. Under the Housing Accountability Act, the city can not deny or reduce the number of units in a project. If that project complies with the general plan and/or zoning density, unless the city can make a finding that there's an unavoidable adverse impact to public health or safety with no feasible type of mitigation. Planning Commissioners have worked with a lot of findings, that's a very strong explicit finding, unavoidable, adverse, and they specifically only said public health and safety. In the world of land use, we are charged with protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. And under welfare is like how a project might appear, or the aesthetics of a project, or the convenience of a situation. So, for example, when we review a telecom project, we are actually talking all about welfare and the aesthetics. The Housing Accountability Act specifically says you cannot reduce the number of units in a project if the general plan or zoning allow it unless it's health or safety, which means an issue of the aesthetics cannot be a factor. That's a strong, a strong finding to make, and actually will lead into the second study session item we have. Of course, this still assumes that the site allows housing in the general plan or in the zoning. So if a site had a general plan that allowed its acreage to have a total of 10 units, and an applicant asked for 10 units, we cannot reduce the number of units unless we can make that finding. If the applicant asks for a density bonus on top of the 10 units, the density bonus law ties our hands, we cannot reduce those number of units. We still have the ability to work through the project design and the site design, but the number of units is pretty much set unless we can make a health or safety finding. So, those are two of the major project, or major points of law that are very significant moving forward. Also want to talk about other aspects, including future laws, and we put in the staff report that the Assembly Speaker, when the last package of housing laws was passed, made a comment to the press that they know that the set of laws in 2017 was just a start. They view housing as a very critical issue, and the League of California Cities Guide touches on some of the reasons they do that. But as is being shown, they are now in the arena of being willing to take away local authority. One of the future, well, a bill that may become a future law, that is being talked about at the state, as I said, it's the same author as SB 35, would actually automatically allow building heights of at least 50 feet for housing along transit corridors. And that is even if the city had a general plan that didn't allow housing along that transit corridor. It would still allow, no limit on density, just a limit on the height and other type of restrictions on local power. Based on the way that law is currently written, Thousand Oaks does not have anything that would qualify as a major transit corridor, as it's currently written. So, that particular law, if it passes, might not affect us now, but once again, it just shows the state going down the path of finding ways to really take away local jurisdiction's ability to turn away housing projects. Moving forward, also, we have, the next housing element cycle is basically started now, staff is starting to work with the Regional Planning Organization of SCAG to start to identify the characteristics and data of the community that will go towards eventually determining what our next RENA target will be for our next housing element. Our next housing element is due on October 2021, we expect we will get the RENA number in about October of 2019. Right now, what you see happening with new projects, housing projects in particular, is that the council has a pre-screening and goes through allocation of measure units. That may have to change under the new housing element, because for the RENA numbers, we have to specifically assign them to a site. Right now, we happen to meet our RENA target and have what is referred to as a pool or a bank of potential units that can be allocated, so under the current housing element, we're okay with that allocation process. But if the next RENA target is higher than we have available sites on the ground, it will switch more to approach where we have to plant them on a site, and then they become by right on that site. Also, with the new housing law, one of the laws created a new funding source for affordable housing and affordable housing programs, and particularly earmarked 50% of the available funds from SB 2 in 2018 for cities to update their long-range planning documents, either general plans or specific plans or zoning ordinances. During the Measure E discussion in October of 2017, our council asked for a report on what the parameters of doing a general plan update would be, and so that is scheduled to go to council on March 20th, and we'll provide the commission with a copy of that report. And there may, there may be a scenario where the idea of looking at the general plan at the same time as the next housing element cycle may make sense, so stay tuned on that. Also, as we're finding, the state laws are pushing very much that the review of housing be based solely on objective criteria, less so on the type of guidelines that might talk about how something may or may not be compatible with a certain area, but to say specifically, you can do this height, you can have this setback and such. A lot of our ordinances are written very much in the framework of knowing there's a discretionary process, where the commission is given a lot of authority and leeway. But in many ways, now with the state laws coming down the path, that may actually reduce your ability to impact a project, because by having such flexibility, we don't have necessarily a single objective height limit. We have, this is the height, but you can do these things, or you can have a waiver here and such. So, another thing that should be looked at as we move forward is looking at those zoning regulations as they relate to many of the state laws, and not just the zoning regulations, we may find a number of our regulations need that. And then lastly, many of these laws are requiring significantly more reporting of the city to the state on its progress on building new housing, getting into a level of detail that becomes more challenging. We are looking at pursuing an upgraded database system, admittedly, that was primarily to make it easier for the public to see what's happening and what's, what applications are in the process and stuff, but that same type of system could also help with many of these new reporting requirements. So, moving forward, the city as a whole, staff will be looking at a lot of these type of adjustments and initiatives to respond to the state. But short-term, the two particular laws that were called out, Housing Accountability Act and SB 35, are ones that will have, could and will have a major effect on how we review projects. This item is meant to be a study session where it's open discussion and Q and A, and we would encourage also to ask for public input as well. Admittedly, we don't have all the answers to every aspect, because these laws are very new, or some of these laws are very new, but I think staff will be able to help with, if there are questions about certain things, we may be able to help you with, like the scenarios that they may apply to us and may not. With that, that concludes my report, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly. I do not have any public speaker cards, by the way, but if something spurs your interest and someone here wants to speak on item 8A, please submit a card. I do have several cards for our next item 8B, but if someone wants to speak in this card while we're discussing, feel free to bring a card down. This is not a public hearing, this is just, we're just discussing. So, Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Gilly, for your presentation. Very interesting. I want to start my questions by reiterating a quote that you cited from the legislature that, quote, "They view housing as a very critical issue." I think we do as well, we may have different ideas about how we address the critical gap in housing, especially affordable housing, but I don't think there's any disagreement that we do face a shortfall of housing and need to figure out how to fill that shortfall. So with that, I've got a few questions about the status of current, well, let's start with current law in the city. And I don't know whether this is a question for you, Mr. Gilly, or perhaps for Mr. He here, but my question is, do any of the modifications or the new laws place the city's municipal code in conflict with state law? And will that require any modifications of general plan, of specific plans, or of municipal code?
Well, I'll take my first shot at it, your question, thank you. I think for the public and for all the commissioners here tonight, I think one of the things, and you kind of mentioned it, Commissioner Newman, this is a statewide mandate that we're receiving now, and the state is looking at various housing issues that are certainly much more critical than Thousand Oaks, as an example. The big cities, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Santa Clara County, et cetera, where they are just struggling with housing. To answer your question, it's difficult in the sense of, we have to look at what's presented as far as a project to kind of understand if it's going to be something that we're going to have an issue with. I think, stepping backwards a little bit, when we look at our code, and you, and all of you as commissioners do a great job doing this, and we try to serve you in doing that, is we always try to make findings as to our position. That hasn't changed, and the HAA is kind of just reminding us, or the state's reminding us, to look at that as a requirement, and I'm not too worried about us doing that, because we've always done that with findings. The difference now that we're having, and which is, I think, more towards your question, is they've taken the element of the subjective element out of it. And so when we're looking at projects now that are coming down the pipe, we have to look at objectively, what are our objective standards that we have that we can place onto this project? And then what are the ones that we can no longer look at? And so when you get to things that look more like architectural design, we get into this gray area of, yes, we have standards, we have, we have policies that we promote that are written down that we can point to, but there's going to be an argument for some of those that they might be too subjective. But when you look at our ordinance, and you go through some of the things we talk about, we talk about character, we want to make sure that our buildings are consistent with the same character as the neighborhood, we have that kind of language in our code. Preserve and protect landmarks and points of historic interest in the city, preserving areas with special historic or aesthetic character. Protect and enhance the visual character of our streets and highways. So we have these elements in our code that talk kind of subjective, kind of objective, right? We have this goal, and every city's going to have that kind of goal, because it's planning. The concern now is that with this rush for the housing and these new laws, it really is a rush. We're having, there was 15 different changes to the laws that were significant changes in this last year that are, and we've talked about a few of those that kind of apply to us. But the state is looking at this as a wide-range problem of saying, we need more housing, not just housing, but affordable housing. So there's two elements, right? We have to have more housing, how do we make that happen? So you have, we're stuck, we need to make this more streamlined, what can we give to the developers to help them streamline this? And how can we ensure that places that might be hesitant about accepting housing, how do we make sure that they are handcuffed in some way by these new laws? And that's kind of what the state's doing. Now, does it affect all the cities? Yes, it does. Are we a bad example of a city for planning? Absolutely not, I'll stand behind that 100%, but it shows you that they're trying to take a statewide problem and say, okay, every city is going to be mandated to do this. So, on the flip side, we have in our code things such as, we want to attract a variety of uses and projects, and to do that, we want to work on developing and upgrading some of the old projects, and we see that in infill projects, where there was something there, like a house, and now they want to make it a multifamily unit, or a bigger house, or something of that nature. And so we have that requirement too, to enhance our city with more workers, with more residents, and more, of course, business. The other thing that we have to look at is the density bonus, and this is one that I think causes some confusion with the public. And the density bonus, when it comes to this housing law, we look at ours, we have a density bonus, we follow state law, so there's no question about that. What's important to note that is, the density bonus doesn't actually, we have no control over it, if they ask for density bonus, they have to provide either very low, low income, moderate income, and if they do those things, then they get this bonus of units, and those units don't count to the density of the project that's allowed at that site. So those are a couple of ways that we are going to be concerned about the conflict versus the consistency with our code. I think the bottom line is, you look at subjective kind of elements that we might have in some of our areas versus subjective.
And if I could just add on to that?
Please.
I think, I think the short answer of whether we're going to need to do changes to our existing policy is maybe, because we're not going to know how these housing project, how our rules may be keeping a housing project from being able to achieve the number of units the zoning or general plan allows, really until that project comes forward and says, hey, I'm trying to do this, it's not working. I think on the surface, the key thing to take is that under our current housing element, we're in very good shape, we're meeting our RENA numbers on the moderate side, we still have more to go on the low and very low, but there may be projects on the horizon that may include some of that. I think the big issue is what's the next cycle, next housing element cycle going to be like, what number is going to be our target, and then how are we going to figure out where that number fits? As projects, as we discussed, in order for most of these laws to, that have the streamlining, in order for them to apply, the site already has to be zoned in general plan for that amount of housing. What the commission and council are seeing more of are requests to take a site that's not allowed for the housing, and they're asking for more. So, that's still going to have a legislative component to it that makes some of these things not apply and allows us to still have more leverage in the project, but for the next cycle, it might not be the same.
If I may add one more thing, Chair, please. Another aspect that's been changed with this new, the review of the HAA is the ability of a applicant or a party that might have an interest to challenge the decision made by this body, for example, and the element of what they need to prove for the evidence that they have. And I don't want to go into too much detail, because it's going to really be on a case-by-case basis, but what they've done in a sense is, they've made it a little bit easier for an applicant to say that their project meets the reasonable goals of a city plan, and they can challenge that in that way, and we have to show when we make a decision. And we have to show, when we make a decision, that our position is based upon a preponderance of the evidence, which is a way of saying, our decision outweighs the other reason to say no. So if we deny it, we're saying that outweighs the reason to accept it, for example, or to approve it. So that's just another wrinkle that they've added. And again, it goes to this total theme of, they need more housing, they want to do it quickly, they're funding it, they're asking cities to go through their general plan and their housing element, and actually help pay for that for some of those cities who might not be able to afford that kind of process because it is a big process. But they're also saying, we're going to try to streamline and give, in some of these projects, we're going to give these developers a way to get right in there ministerially approve a project and push that through. And so that's really, if you think of that theme, that's kind of what these new housing laws are all about.
Yeah, I appreciate the survey of the current state of city law, both from you and Mr. Gilly. Mr. Gilly had made a comment in his presentation about stripping out the subjective elements of the process, and you alluded to two of those, at least two of which are currently part of city law. The architectural review guidelines and language elsewhere in resolutions and perhaps in the code itself as to maintaining the character of a neighborhood or of a specific plan. And those are ultimately subjective calls. So I can see where that might be in conflict with these new state mandated guidelines.
Let me just say, I think the architectural guidelines, there's some, there is actually a lot of objective aspects to it.
Yes, there are.
It just gets, you get into this situation, and this just goes back to the burden of proof, and it goes back to how you can challenge it. And these new laws are giving the ability to challenge some of those decisions a little bit more. So one, it makes our job to make sure our findings are, if we're denying a project, for example, are really strong. But when you get to like architectural guidelines, you get into a location where there's a hodgepodge in the neighborhood of different types of homes or different types of uses. And you say, well, this one's really not consistent. Well, if it's hodgepodge, it's hard to say what is consistent and what is not consistent. That's kind of, that's going to be kind of like the era where we might have a problem. But if we have a development that it's a certain type of architecture in that whole neighborhood, and that new house comes in, then our architectural guidelines, I think, are very objective for that. Again, it just leaves a little bit more room for argument, and makes our job to ensure that you have the findings and make findings during decision-making that we can defend if it goes to that point.
On that point, I realize this is a study session. We're not talking about specific applications before us, and we should be careful to stay away from discussions that might affect future cases. So I'll ask about one past case that we've already decided on, and a couple hypotheticals. These are not real projects. I hope these are projects that would never come before us, but I want to better understand the parameters of what is and is not allowed by the changes to the HAA, specifically removing the welfare, the aesthetics and the compatibility aspects of what we do as a commission. So the one past case I'll ask about was at the Oaks Mall. This had to do with the expansion of the Cheesecake Factory, where I'm not sure whether it was last spring or perhaps a little earlier. The commission rejected the applicant's, the original application essentially on subjective grounds, on grounds of architectural incompatibility with the overall design of the main entrance arch and the general design of the Oaks Mall. And the planner on that, who is an architect, pointed to these architectural details as a basis for the finding that, for staff's recommendation, that the commission asked the applicant to go back and come up with a more compatible design. So now fast forward to today, where the commission no longer has welfare, meaning aesthetics or compatibility, as a basis for making findings. Question, would staff, would commission be able to arrive at the same recommendation for an applicant?
Well, as, with a couple, go ahead, sure.
First, let's assume that that same example's a housing project, because the HAA is only talking about housing.
That's a good distinction to make.
So if a commercial project comes in, industrial project, the state isn't finding that there's the same, there's no limit on local control.
So just so I understand, the planning commission of Thousand Oaks retains the ability to make general welfare, to use general welfare as a criteria on in deciding whether an application should or should not proceed, true?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's a very good distinction to make.
The welfare is only lost if you are trying to lower the number of units in a project. If you're working with a developer on the number of units they're asking for, you can still talk about architecture and design and things like that. You just can't use architecture as a tool for reducing the units.
Okay, understood.
Now, there will be times, and as they come forward, it's going to be a team effort between the attorney's office and community development to figure out what is the approach that best provides the public with the best outcome with the least likelihood of challenge. But for the most part, the laws that are coming in, taking away control, are focusing on, you can't reduce the number of units. If the zoning says 10, then you have to allow 10. Now, if you have a recommendation that is not a significant cost, like is half a percentage point cost or something, the average developer is just, is going to work with that. If a city came in and tried to make a design condition that added, increased cost by 20%, that's clearly the case where the applicant's going to say, well, you're just arbitrarily increasing my cost. And so you still have the full ability to talk about aesthetics and welfare, just can't use it to decrease units.
Okay. So on that point, that brings me to hypothetical example. If an applicant had a project that met general plan, it met zoning, it met code, let's say hypothetically, the applicant's asking for a density bonus, but the project is painted in bright fluorescent colors, bright pink, bright orange, and bright green stripes, in some kind of crazy plaid pattern. Does the commission not have the ability to say, that's hideous, don't do that?
I would make the argument that if the item is before you, and the form of the building and the actual material details, the commission's fine with, what planning staff would recommend is that you conditionally approve it with a different color. You give them the units, you give them the design overall, but you do say, we want a color that is more matching. They can, in theory, challenge, but that seems, I mean, if the developer gets the units, that the things that are actually going to be making them whole economically, it's not likely they're going to challenge on just color.
I'm giving an extreme example to make the point of what is subjective and not. It sounds like you're saying, at least in theory, if the commission rejected something on the basis of not liking what color it was painted, the applicant would have a stronger case now than before.
Would have a stronger case now, and yes.
And appealing that decision, is that right?
Yes. And the key thing is, yeah, where on the spectrum are you, and where on the spectrum is our condition or our recommendation?
So let's get to my second hypothetical, which is, depending on the eye of the beholder, perhaps somewhat more reasonable. Let's say an architect comes in with a very sleek, minimalist, modernist, black monolith design for a building. It's completely incompatible with the neighborhood, which are surrounding, let's say, all the surrounding structures are one- and two-story adobe structures that are very common with stucco, very common here in Thousand Oaks. And someone wants to put in a miniature version of the CBS BlackRock headquarters here in Thousand Oaks. It's a four-story building, and in this case, four stories is allowed. Architecturally, it would be quite incompatible with its surroundings. Again, does the commission have any basis for objecting to that design? If the units and code and general plan compatibility all check out, is there any subjective basis for refusing that design?
So again, I will say that there's certainly a possibility that if the only element that you're left with is a subjective finding, then we might have some difficulty. I think what we always do with our planners, and we have a great reputation in our city, at least, for doing this, is that we're working with the developers and talking about the architecture, talking about size and fitting on the lot, et cetera. The landscaping around there, saving the trees, all those factors come into play when we have these initial discussions. And we're going to look at all the options, and once it's presented to you, we should be in a position where we say, here is what we have, and here is what you can and cannot do, if that's what the case is. And a great example of that is, we talk about wireless, for example. When it comes to, we don't want the wireless facility because we believe it's creating some type of health, it's creating a health problem to people around there. While we might agree or disagree with that statement, the fact is that the federal government has taken that out of our control. So that would never be a basis for us to reject a wireless facility in this, and my recommendation would be, don't object and deny it for that reason, because that would be improper reason. But we have, in other cases, where we have denied a wireless facility in a certain location for a lot of other reasons that we have the ability to do. This is kind of similar in the sense that the new housing laws have given us a little bit less room to look at a plan and to look at a project and respond with sometimes things that we think are very fair in our review of it, but we might not have that ability to have that as a review point any longer. Again, I just want to emphasize, this is going to be a case-by-case basis, as always. And again, the purpose tonight is just the theme of, there are some new housing laws that are really going to restrict cities, including our city, in the future, and we're going to have to see how those play out.
And I appreciate all the work that staff does in working with applicants to bring projects up to code and to make them compatible with their surroundings, but it sounds like with these changes, applicants will have a freer hand moving forward.
And somewhat. The majority of developers that I've been able to work with want to go through the process, want to do what they need to do to make it fit into the location and address the needs of the community. And for the one out of however many that don't want to be nice at all, someone could come in very hard in line and try to push a perspective. We'll be doing everything on our part to try to come up with as much of a basis for getting it, once again, as close to what we think is appropriate. But I think there's other areas that, that's where a lot of the long-range planning documents could help. If more detail is put into the general plan, or specific plans, or what have you, that it doesn't just say, be compatible. What if we have six architectural styles that are identified, and it explicitly maybe even says, these two aren't allowed? Then you might be able to make the argument that it was, it's as objective as you can make that topic. And in reviewing the state's laws over the years, it does look like they are coming from the approach where they expect that we are amending our regulations and policies more frequently. Realistically, most cities have smaller staffs than they used to, it takes a lot of time to do that, and so most cities take the approach of just working with the rules they have, using the discretionary process to fill in the gaps. And now I think we have the responsibility of going back and filling in the gaps with stronger policies that are clear.
I think something like those long-range guidelines would be very helpful toward accomplishing that goal. I'll have one minor quibble with something you said about this being the exception. There have been two cases in the past year where that exception has come up. In one case, an architect pretty much belittled adobe-style stucco, said, oh, it's so boring, you know, what, essentially was saying to the commission, why don't you even consider something else? And in another, the commission rejected an application to do something that was different. This is along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I realize that that's commercial and out of scope for this discussion, but the concern I'm raising in all of these questions is that it, by taking this tool out of our arsenal, I'm concerned that the commission isn't able to fully manage the planning process if aesthetics and compatibility aren't part of the guiding process. I think there may be other ways to accomplish that same goal. And I'm sure other commissioners like to weigh in on this. I'd encourage, like the suggestion you made about long-term guidelines, for us to find other ways to do that. Because I think that is, if we're not able to do that, then what's the point of bringing a process to us? You don't need our help in deciding something does or doesn't meet code. That doesn't seem like a good use of anyone's time, including ours. But if we can find other ways to accomplish these same goals, I think that that would be a worthwhile pursuit. I have no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Some excellent discussion. Thanks for starting us off. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly have a lot of echoes of my fellow commissioner and a lot of his comments, most notably those long-term guidelines. I wanted to come back and just ask a bit of a history question. In the actual supplement, the new housing law in California, they had mentioned redevelopment agencies, which went away in 2011, 2012. History question more for the city, what, if I remember right, 20% of that money was allocated towards affordable housing. You know, what were we doing with that, those funds? I assume we were giving them to Many Mansions and some of the other local affordable housing, you know, developers around town, because it just, and maybe it's a question that doesn't warrant an answer, but it just seems to me that a lot of this is kind of self-created out of Sacramento on their own. But let's get to SB 2. I just had a question, looking at the report. It mentions, beginning in 2019 and for subsequent years, 70% of the proceeds are allocated to local governments through the federal CDBG formula, so that the funds may be used to address housing needs at the local level. I was just curious, one, what was the CDBG formula? And two, you know, what are, do we have an idea of how much money that could possibly allocate for us to address the affordable housing issue?
So CDBG right now is an interesting topic. It's the Community Development Block Grant Program, for which is a process of providing funds for public improvements, affordable housing programs and such. It's, at this point, we do not know if there will be any CDBG funding in the next federal budget cycle. In past years, it was there, and now there's a new administration, and we're not sure any will be there.
This is a federal or a state?
It's federal, because you know, it's talking about using the federal formula.
Okay.
So if there ends up being no federal funding, then the state will have to figure out a different approach. Maybe it still uses the formula, but it will allocate those funds to us in that way. Just off the top of my head, I think recently we've been getting in the ballpark of maybe five to half a million to a million. five to half a million to a million. I think the last couple of years, maybe it's in the eights. And those go to a variety of programs, and every year, an item is taken to council with kind of the list of the requests. And it's from the local housing providers, housing advocates and such. So what this is saying is, in those future years, the majority of the funds for SB 2 will go towards those type of programs and projects.
So overall, in theory, if we keep the same federal formula, the state adopts its own formula, should it go away. Would we expect more, just in theory, than $500 to about a million? Because where is that money coming from now?
Yeah, so it's coming from the federal government. So just, it just seems likely if the federal government turned off those funds, that the state funds from this new bill probably isn't going to equal that. I think the original intent was, this would add on to what was received, to be a supplemental. But at this point, it's, there's just a lot of uncertainty around CDBG.
And who allocates that? You said the council gets a list of where that money would go. Is it done by the successor agency, then, that would allocate it out to the community? Or does the city just allocate that out directly? Or how does that whole process?
For CDBG, we allocate it, it's a federal grant money. We actually, every year, have a couple of staff members of our CDD who go through a, it's a process. I read this more as a process that we'd have to go through for this type of money, to receive this type of money. It's a very convoluted process. There is various requirements and reporting requirements. So when, once this money is allocated, one, we have to demonstrate how it was allocated; two, we have to demonstrate that the company that, or the group that's using the money has property, used the money. They have to state their purpose. Then they also have to report how they're using the money, and then report back that it was used, and hear how it was done, and show the evidence of that. And all that is given back to both the city and to the federal government as a reporting. And so then every year, we come up with these projects that we are anticipating could be used, that we could use the CDBG money for. And we have a hearing, and then there is a 30-day comment period to talk about those projects. And then after that, the money's allocated, and we approve them, or the council approves them, and then the money's dispersed. So as Peter mentioned, we have things such as Many Mansions is one, where they have a housing project, and they're going to add things such as air conditioning units to 30 or 40 units. Well, if you add that up, that's a lot of money, new roofs, other types of work. So they have to apply, demonstrate that the money's used, and it meets certain requirements for affordable housing, and for people that have the need for that type of assistance. And then we go through the process of allocating that money up. So the city has a big responsibility of managing it, and then reporting it, and the individuals have to report it. And then we get in trouble if we, if those people aren't reporting it. We have the duty to ensure that they are reporting it correctly. Similarly, I think this is what's going to happen, is we're going to have this pot of money. I personally don't think it's going to be close to what we get from the federal government, and it's going to be used for these type of projects, for general plan amendments and those costs that are going to be incurred for those type of heavy-duty things. That's how I envision this happening.
So it's almost more administrative cost and upkeep cost versus necessarily you're going out and you're building new projects and you're helping?
I think it's going to be interesting to see how that develops over time. I think the pot of monies that they're doing with SB 2 is, in large part, for the developers to say, hey, you know, we don't want to, excuse me, we don't want to build affordable housing because it costs, we don't make enough money on it, right? And again, the money that developers make on affordable housing, the unit costs the same to build, whether it's for market rate or not, it's the flip side of when they want to sell the project, or the covenants that are there for the affordable housing that lay a factor, or it's factored into the price and the cost. And so they don't get the return that they're expecting when they develop. So the way to entice that is to say, we're going to give you, here's a pot of money that you can get financing for. Because it's also hard for them sometimes, at least they argue this, to get financing for these kind of projects if they find out that a lot of it's for affordable housing, because it's a timeline of when you make your money back. And so when you have a covenant for 55 years, they realize they're not going to make that money back for a period of time. And so some banks or investors aren't going to invest in that type of project when they could go invest in a regular market-rate housing project.
You had mentioned in 2018, 50% of the funds are earmarked for the general plan, specific plan updates. And perhaps you had mentioned council's going to receive a report in March about how we can ensure we get our piece of that to do the update. Is that correct?
We are taking a report on the parameters of doing a comprehensive update to the general plan to the council, based on a request that came out of the Measure E study. Part of that report, we're going to note that there is this funding available, so that may be a factor. But it's not that, the item going to council is not because of SB 2, it was because of a prior request.
If you could just help explain how we get our HNA numbers? And, you know, this is very specific where my fellow commissioner went very general, just in terms of, I'm just curious to better understand, you know, what are these low-income, what are these middle-income numbers that we have to hit as a city?
So, in general, the state identifies the amount of units it wants to be built in a certain time period. Then it divides that number, and it breaks, they break at the macro level, that number up into above moderate, moderate, low, very low, and so on. They then split that number up amongst all the regions in the state. They send that number with the breakdowns to each state. Then each region works together to try to develop an approach of how to split it up. The state generally gives the regions the ability to figure out a split the way they want. The state doesn't necessarily come in and say, you shall do it this way, you shall do it that way. And then, in general, the percentages just follow what the state goal is. Your total share is worked out depending on how much space you have in your region compared to the other cities in the region. It could be a variety of things. It could be population, it could be available land, it could be strength of transit, a variety of things. But when you eventually get a number, you will get a certain percentage of it at this level, a certain percentage of it expected to be that level. Those generally always match what the state lays out there.
And what is our region?
It's all of Southern California.
Oh, okay. So that's very, very broad.
Not San Diego, but all of Southern, yes.
Kind of LA County, Ventura County, Orange County?
San Bernardino.
San Bernardino?
Big area, yeah. Now, the larger region may, because we're so large, may try to divvy it up into smaller groups, but that's left up to the region.
I think that's all the questions I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gilly, for going through things. The process here, as I was looking at this, kind of felt like I was looking at the first two cards of a deck of cards, that we're going to get another 50 cards at some point, discussing a lot of things. And in terms of me going through it and then talking to a few residents, I think the concern I had was just trying to go back to some definitional things. I mean, we obviously can deal with hypotheticals that get out there, but I think it would benefit everybody to actually have a concept of some of the basic terms, because I got the feeling from talking to a few residents, they didn't understand that. With regard to that, on SB 35, it's trying to obviously support affordable housing. What does that mean?
As was stated, a major issue for the state is affordable housing, but there are many definitions of affordable housing. As was put into the League of California Cities Guide, there is data that shows the number of people who have to spend more than 30% of their income on housing is far higher than what is economically healthy. And thus, affordable housing is simply more housing so that people aren't spending more than 30% of their income. Now, when affordable housing is put into a project, let's say through a density bonus, and it's very low, low, or whatever level, then those are specific categories of income that you need to be to qualify for that unit, and then you only have to pay 30% of your income as rent for that unit. So that's a type of affordable, that's a subsidized type of affordable. But the state's position also is, just because so many people are spending more than 30% on their, on housing, it's not just the subsidized, it's, there just needs to be more units, so that the general theory of supply and demand, you know, evens out a bit. So there's a lot of versions, a lot of definitions of the word affordable. One of the terms internally we're starting to talk more about is workforce housing, housing that is, that someone who works either as a teacher, as a cadet at the sheriff's department, or starting off in the fire department, or so on and so forth, that allows them to actually live in the community they work. That's, that's what is generally meant when staff is talking about providing affordable housing, because that's, unfortunately, if you are in a family, and you have children, and you're the only employee person, if you are in one of those jobs, you will qualify for some of those subsidized housing. So it's twofold. There isn't enough housing for it to be affordable at the market level, and there is not enough housing for the people who are at the income, in the income ranges at the lower end.
And is that a definition at the moment that exists? Is that a definition that could change if the state wants to enact other things that actually change how that's applied?
The state has left those definitions pretty much constant. It's always a percentage of the area median income, normally of a county, but if it's a large enough city, maybe it's just of, that's like, perhaps in LA, well, they're kind of the county and city. But if you, it's of an area, so the area median income in the San Francisco Bay Area is one thing, the area median income in the Central Valley is another thing. And so it's a percentage of that which is looked at.
So in looking at a project under SB 35, at this moment in time for our city, would have to be more than 50% affordable housing. Has there ever been a project in the city of Thousand Oaks that actually has been more than 50% affordable housing?
Only the ones that are all affordable, by like affordable housing. Yeah, and so on the case of, you have to be 50% affordable, that means 50% of the units need to be subsidized affordable.
That's a very rare thing, it sounds like, to be in that situation.
And let me just say, for affordability, you look at, as Peter mentioned, Ventura County, for example, has a median income level that you look at, it's a chart. And so just for example, as a family of four, in Ventura County, the median income for low-income would be $80,000. For very low-income, it would be, for the four people that live in the home, would be $50,000 approximately, I'm saying. But you take that to San Francisco, their median income is about $116,000. And so then that number goes up, obviously, as to what would qualify as a family of four for low-income. And the chart goes to a family of two, single goes a family of eight, and after eight, you have to do some more calculations to figure that out.
Okay. One thing on the Housing Accountability Act that I had some questions about is, I understand, and you bolded in the report well to say, our involvement is limited to issues that impact public safety and health, and not as to public welfare. Are the, is there a definition of public safety, or something that people can refer? Because again, the concern I have is, I want to make sure we're being transparent, and if somehow some people think we have more discretion than we do, I want to say, no, our discretion is based upon public safety. Is that codified in somewhere, or is that really just an accepted definition of what public safety means?
I believe the state code has more description to it. On the health and safety side, it, my understanding, and please, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it is pretty literal that it's talking about allowing something that would be directly detrimental to the health of a person, or to the safety of a person.
Well, I mean, for instance, something considered-
Welfare's been the one that's been given the most kind of broad sense.
So again, some people may say, hey, you know, the electromagnetic energy submitted by a building that's on a street, right next to the street, actually causes something. But again, it can't be based on something that's quote-unquote "reasonable." There's actually some kind of existing statutes or codes that actually identify what those kind of parameters would apply to.
What might help is, sometimes we look at, when we have reviews of projects, we look at with police, we have it reviewed with fire, of course, and with our engineers, and we look at things such as soil compaction, that they have to make sure that they're meeting soil compaction, they're going to show evidence of that, that an engineer has been reviewing that. We have retaining walls, and so they want to build a project that's a certain height and size, that all centers reaching into 25% slope. And so now they have to show that they can meet that with the proper retaining walls. And if they're not meeting that, it's a safety factor. Same with fire, where they have a certain footprint that they're trying to meet with their design, but the way that they have designed it, fire can't get access to certain floors, or it's very difficult. So fire chimes in and says, you need to change this, because we cannot support this because of safety, that we can't get to a certain location. And then there's, when that happens, then there's reviews of, can we do this with a better sprinkling system, or with different types of walls, different types of materials? So all those factors come into play.
Okay. One of the last questions I got is, does Measure E somehow, is it impacted by virtue of this ability to not deny units or not to lower units?
So Measure E is the growth control measure that states you cannot increase the amount of general plan residential density above what was in existence in '96, when Measure E was passed. And so in the cases we're talking about, the site already has to be, have a general plan designation and zoning for housing. And so when we calculated what the allowed general plan in '96 had, it already accounted for these particular sites having up to that many units. Measure E comes into play most when there's an allocation request to increase density. And once again, that then takes us into a position where the city isn't forced to approve the general plan amendment to allow more housing on the site, so long as our RENA numbers are being met. And so a lot of these tie together, but most of the items that take, that limit local control are based on, the zoning is already in place, or the general plan's already in place, therefore Measure E has already counted for those units there.
Sounds good. I have nothing further.
Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Lanson, and Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, thank you. The questions that have been asked already have helped me a lot with my understanding, so thank you to all of you. I had one more question. When it's been discussed that we cannot reduce the number of units, and that's a given. Perhaps, just theoretically, there's a building that seems to be over big for the site, or maybe would require tearing out oak trees. Can we reduce the size of the building and not reduce the number of units? Just perhaps ask the developer, instead of all these three-bedroom units, make some of them studios, or just reduce the square footage of the units, so we're keeping the unit number the same, and yet perhaps we can reduce the building size?
The, it will be a case-by-case approach, but I think in most cases, the answer's going to be yes. I think we have the ability to do that. If someone is coming in with a project that has unit sizes, or they're all three bedrooms, or the unit sizes, we have data on, that show they're far beyond typical new construction sizes for the type of bedrooms they're talking about. I think we'd have the ability to work through that. It comes down to a case where, you know, could we make a project proposing a mix of unit sizes be all studios? Maybe not. But if it were a project on the other extreme, being all three bedrooms, I think we could make some findings about trying to provide as much housing opportunities to a wide range of groups. That also can let us possibly address certain massing issues in some cases. So yes, I think that's available, but once again, it's going to be case-by-case, and if we push a developer to the point where they can make a case that we are significantly affecting their economic ability to make the project work, then we have to be very cautious. So it's a tough one.
Yeah, I think Peter just said right there is-
Yeah, I, I think Peter just said right there is, when we initially review a project, we're looking at what's, what is the project, what's the density bonus, for example, that they might be asking for? And then we say, okay, what size are you, what size units are you looking for? And then we, we try to evaluate at some point in time, if it gets to a, a position where we are having difficulty supporting a project, then we, we look at, okay, what's it going to cost you to build this project? And why are you asking for this size? And then there's some need for them to demonstrate through a performer, for example, of, of here's what it's costing us. And again, we have to go back to also the fact of when you have a density bonus and you have those other affordable units, there is a cost that they're not going to recover for a while through, talks about their, their bottom line, if you will. So those are, and again, it could be, it's, it really has to be a case by case basis because you, you have to look at the size, you have to look at what are they building and how are they building it? And, and what materials are they using? All those factors come into play. But a great question on that.
So that is likely to happen with staff before it comes to us?
Absolutely, yeah. We are always looking at that.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. I have a few questions as well. In just hearing the discussion that we've had, covered a lot of territory here, appreciate all the good input. What I, I'm kind of asking a rhetorical question here. But if we're, we're being pressed to implement guidelines that the, that are being, well, forced, or however you want to look at it, upon us from the state, and we are involuntarily relinquishing some of our abilities at the local level, but this is being replicated for every community throughout the state, not like we're being picked on. But at the same time, what we have been using for years has made our community what it is. That's kind of what it makes it look like. What I would envision in 20, 25 years is all cities throughout California looking the same, because everyone's following the same guidelines from the state, and there is no local control. So everything just kind of, you know, if you get a developer that has a, a cookie cutter type of design, it's just going to be plopped in every community. So I say that rhetorically, I don't expect any question, but, or any comments, but nonetheless. Mr. Gilli, you mentioned that if in some instances, the developer does not like the, the position or the direction which you're going, and could challenge the decision, to whom or what body or agency does that challenge go to?
With some of the new laws, I mean, the challenges would always go to the court. With some of the new laws, I believe you could actually even begin the challenge before the cities made the final decision, which is new. It used to be you had to go exhaust all your, all your remedies, you had to go through planning commission, appeal the planning commission to council, and then only then, if you, if, if it didn't work out, you, you could then go to court. So the, the new state legislator, legislature, legislation is opening up avenues where in certain cases, a developer is able to get kind of the court's position sooner. And once again, if, if we step back and look at California, it's a huge state, huge population, so many jurisdictions. There are some jurisdictions who don't even try to meet the housing laws. And as, as was stated, I would concur. Thousand Oaks is, we met all of our moderate, we're making progress on the low and very low. We follow the density bonus law, so on and so forth. But they're, they're, the, the state is making new rules so that cities that really aren't trying to meet the state's goals don't have as, as much of a support system in the law to be able to keep doing that. So the new laws do have more in fines, more in, the, the burden of proof is, is shifting. It used to be that if, if there was a court challenge and findings were made by a planning commission or a council, as long as the findings look reasonable, you're almost done. Now, it, it's, it's not going to be as easy. It's, it's going to take more work if those items are challenged. And so the, the main goal, as always, is to try to avoid those, those type of situations. But to answer the original question, it's the court.
Okay. All right. Thank you. When you were referring to displacing tenants, under the little description there, it talks about demolishing older apartments in favor of a new apartment complex. What about demolishing single family dwellings?
That's, that's not, I, I don't have the full answer on that. Because it's, it's not clear, because they do say it's a tenant. So do they mean if it's a single family homeowner that has a big, a large lot, and is proposing to do a new project, might they qualify? That, that's actually something that isn't clear. And when it does eventually happen somewhere in California, it might end up in court to, you know, decide what the state really meant by that rule. Or the state may amend the law in a future year to clear it up. But it's, it's not quite clear on that. Now, if it's a single family tenant, I think it's still clear that it's a tent, whether it's a homeowner or a, because the idea is they don't want to hurt the rental market by making it easier to create these new units, of which most of the new units may be expensive. Some may be truly affordable and subsidized, but the, the others will just be brand new apartments at brand new apartment rents.
And does this have, or would the remodeling of an existing apartment complex also fall into this where someone were to remodel it such that the existing tenants could not afford the new rent because now it's become luxury apartments? Is that, I don't, didn't hear any discussion about that. Is that also covered in this legislation?
I, I don't think so, because I think in most cities, remodeling an apartment will not need the same level of city review, or even environmental review, as a completely new project. Because one of the aspects of SB 35, and it being a ministerial process, is there is no CEQA review. CEQA is only around when it's a discretionary action. So it's just, it bypasses that. So if it is an existing apartment complex and is, the owner wants to remodel it, I'm not seeing SB 35 applying, primarily because I don't think the state sees that as, as, as critical a need as just building new units.
Even though it could result in displacing, displacing tenants?
Yes, because those cases where you take an older apartment complex and, and, and you renovate it, you're doing that for the purpose of trying to get higher rents. And yes, you could displace. So SB 35 was not meant to solve the issue of displacement. The author just didn't want SB 35 used to spur on more displacement through a ministerial process.
And a question, you mentioned that the developer must request the ministerial process in SB 35. Is that a formal request, a written request, a form to submit? Or can that be just across the table at a discussion with the planning staff? Hey, this is what I'd like to do.
Oh, I mean, we would ask for it in writing. I don't know that we would create an application per se, but we would want it in writing. And we would want evidence that they meet all of the factors they need to meet.
Okay. And under the Housing Accountability Act, in reference to the term unavoidable adverse impact, is that in reference to environmental adverse impact, or is that open for interpretation?
It's the, it's similar language to CEQA, but this is the literal language out of the statute. And so in, in reading that, this seems isolated only to health and safety, even though it even uses the term of mitigation, all of which is in the realm of CEQA. Certain, certain elements of CEQA are health and safety related, as, as, as was mentioned. If the, if the soils aren't adequate, or if there is issues with, with fire access and such, but it, it's not directly tying it to CEQA.
If I make sure, an example of that would be, as you're a fire person, a fire department person. When we have projects sometimes, and we are trying to, to solve the fire department's concern about safety of the, of getting water, for example, or getting people onto the project, the height, and make sure the ladders can reach over to a certain distance, et cetera. One option sometimes is, oh, if we sprinkle it, if we do sprinkler system in a more significant manner, if we have steel or concrete used in, in the, in the project, and we have doors that take two hours to go through, et cetera, versus a standard kind of unit, that might solve the problem, so there is a way to avoid it. In this case, what they're talking about is it's unavoidable, where you can't solve it. So it's kind of like CEQA, where there's might be mitigation. And so if you can't come up with a solution to, to address that safety factor, then it's unavoidable.
And what is the process to determine an unavoidable adverse impact or public health and safety? Is this the CEQA process, or is CEQA no longer part of the process? Or is this a different process altogether?
The burden would be on the city staff to, to identify it. Whether it's our work with sheriff department, work with, with, with fire, whether it's other kind of structural type building code issues, the burden's on us to identify it. Now, the project may have a CEQA component that could have some reports that, that assist us. But in, but in theory, it could be a case that it's not CEQA related, and we just have to do the work internally and with the other departments to prove that case.
Okay. All right, and I heard you make a comment, you were talking about the future laws and, and what the, the city has, I guess, at their disposal. You talk about kind of restricts us from turning away a project. But is that turning away, or is that turning away and/or modifying? Or is that, is it two distinct pathways? Whether it's a yes or no process, or conditional approval process, or conditional denial?
Well, and that's going to be case by case. The states, the Housing Accountability Act is clear when we can deny or reduce the number of units. The, the law still allows the city to put conditions. Conditions can be challenged if we cannot tie them to as many objective standards as possible. So I think moving forward, if a project comes forward, the number of units, if the general plan allows it, zoning allows it, that topic's pretty much done. We can look at the other things. We can look at, well, are you a box of a building? Do you have articulation? Once again, the more support we have in our, in our general plan and our guideline, and, and those documents, you know, the better. And so it, it will be, it will be case by case. And there'll be some, some developers who upfront will just come in and talk to us, and, and they are committed to the same level of quality that, that we are. And they, they do want the units, but they're working with us. And then hopefully you won't see any hard, hard cases. Then there will be some who will say, no, I get my however many units, and, and, and make me, make it nicer. And those will be cases where we'll be strategically working before it comes here to try to tie as many conditions to objective findings as possible, so that the end result is as, as, as much like what the community is used to seeing as, as in the past.
Okay. And one last question, and this is maybe a little presumptuous at this point. But you've got this list, obviously with the, with the law packet here. There's a number of new laws that you were talking about. You tried to highlight the ones that were most applicable, or most likely to apply to the housing projects that we typically would encounter. Would we expect to see in our reports from staff, going down this list, that you go through your analysis, and you're targeting these different points in these different laws, of which one applies, which one doesn't, or, or the RENA, or these things? Will these all need to be addressed now in the staff report? Or is it just, again, case by case, which I realize this is an evolving process, that as you look at each case, you'll just have to pick the ones that apply? As I just, again, this is obviously a learning process for you as much as it is for us. And, you know, where these all apply is kind of a moving target for us right now.
Yes, exactly. And so many of the laws are going to apply to how we do our next housing element. And so when that starts up, you're going to see references to a number of these. The ones that affect project review, when, when they are the reason why a certain situation is the way it is in a project, we, we are going to raise that and, and, and make the note. Because it's as important, even after the planning commission gets used to the fact that, you know, these are the laws, and this is the purview, it's important that it be explained in the report. So, so a member of the public reading it knows what the commission and the city has the authority to do and, and does not. So now, over time, they may stop being referred to by their bill number, and just to a government code section. But they will probably continue to be referenced, particularly the Housing Accountability Act.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to return to the discussion we had before about subjective criteria. Just to reiterate the parameters you spelled out, and I just want to make sure that I understand what this commission can and cannot do in terms of application of, of the general welfare, general welfare criteria, such as compatibility or aesthetics. So if I understand correctly, the following two statements are true. Number one, given the changes to the Housing Accountability Act, this commission cannot use general welfare criteria to reduce the number of units in an application. True?
Unless we make the finding of, of the significant impact on public health and safety.
Right, right. But it cannot, it cannot use a welfare criterion-
I'm sorry, true, yes.
-for making that finding. Right. And then number two, in all other cases, including commercial use cases, including other types of, of residential cases, single family residential and other cases, the commission is still able to use general welfare criteria in considering an application. Is that also true?
Clearly on, on the non-residential, could, because these laws only apply, apply to residential. For the type of, for the type of laws we're talking about applying to a single family review, it would have to be at the point where you're either not letting them have a reasonable sized house, or not letting them have an ADU that's allowed by, by law. And so I think there's a lot of, of ability for the, for the commission to work through and make sure a, a house will fit on a site, because you're still allowing them to have a house.
Well, I, I think of sizing as a more objective criterion. I mean, something, when, when, for starters, when there's an extension to a house, it only comes before this commission if the extension is 50% or more of, of the existing square footage. So that, that's an objective, testable, empirical fact. Something is, or it is not 50% greater than the number before. What I'm asking about are the subjective criteria, and whether those can be used. Because that, that, at least in my experience here, that's been the cause of more of the discussion for residential cases of all kinds.
It's, based on reading all these rules and seeing where, where the state's coming from, I have not picked up any sense that there is statewide need for cities to approve individual homes on hillside properties faster or quicker. The focus is really on multifamily housing. So I think the likelihood of, of something like the laws we've talked about applying to a home addition or a new home, once again, I think as long as they get, and here's where the subjectivity comes in, the reasonable sized house, it's, it should be fine. I mean, there are some cities that have limits on stories, that there's some cities that choose to either as a whole city, it's only one story, or portions of cities, and-
Right. Right.
And I have not heard any comments at any conference or anything about the state looking at that component. So I would think until we learn anything else, you should view your authority for the single-family reviews to be unchanged.
Okay, great. I'll close by just going out on a limb and making a wild prediction that there will continue to be subjective points of contention over multi-housing units. Whether the state says we should or shouldn't discuss that, I think that issue's going to come up. I think the broad brush at a high level, the broad brush solutions that you've proposed, things like architectural guidelines, will go a long way toward helping us address those because I think there will continue to be a need to address those. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Commissioner Pletcher?
I'm sorry, just one final question.
Please, take your time.
We've been talking about kind of the all-or-nothing, multifamily unit, single-family unit, commercial, industrial. I'm assuming the HAA would apply to a mixed-use project. And how would that kind of be treated when you have a mixture of elements that are quote-unquote "subjective," but they're subjective in relation to the commercial units and may not apply, let's say, to the residential, vice versa? It just seems to overcomplicate the issue when then you bring in a commercial element on the bottom and you add two layers on top and you call those residential, but the bottom layer is really all that we can kind of play with in terms of subjective considerations, factors, architecture, et cetera.
And so SB 35 does, for example, does apply to mixed-use. So if an area is owned for residential mixed-use or has the general plan for it, they happen to make the caveat that at least two-thirds of the square footage has to be designated for residential. So I mean, which for the projects we're seeing, most of the mixed-use square footage is residential. So
Well, I was more talking HAA versus the SB 35.
Yeah. The HAA still comes down to you can't reduce the number without making those special findings. The goal is to have as many of our design regulations and guidelines as objective as possible. And there are a lot of cities in the state and the country that have more objective ones. And so it may just be a case of trying to, you know, collect the best of all those areas. But HAA doesn't completely take away the ability to look at aesthetics. It just means you can't reduce the number of units. And in the end, the amount of discussion of welfare that the commission and staff can do is all going to be dependent on a relationship with that developer. And so our goal is going to be, as staff, to build a positive relationship, work with that developer, to get them through the process so that it is a cooperative effort. So that if we did come to the commission and you found an issue on welfare and you wanted to talk about it, that we have assisted that applicant enough that they're completely open to having that conversation and working with you. So, once again, occasionally that won't happen. And then we'll have to do the heavy lifting on what we do about it. But in the end, the goal is to get as much improvement, architectural quality, compatibility as we possibly can. And because most of the projects you're going to see in the near future are going to be measure allocations, those have the whole issue of should you even approve a general plan amendment to plant the units on this site? By the time we get to the next housing element, we need to have more policies more strongly written to give you and staff and the council more ability to ask for and expect some of the less objective things that we do now, but we can find a way to make them more objective in that time period.
Sure. An early thank you to you both for sitting on the firing line for quite a while. Thank you to the city attorney and Mr. Gilli. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pletcher. Any other comments from the commissioners or questions? I do have one public speaker card from Ms. Joan Edwards, and I see she just stepped out. Do you know if she was planning to return? Can anyone tell me?
Yes, she is.
And did she want to speak? Did she want to speak on 8A or 8B? Because I don't have any card for her on 8B.
She'll be back, but you have Marilyn in the interim.
Well, for 8A? Ms. Edwards, you're right on time. If you care to join us at the podium. Thank you for hearing us out and appreciate your comments as always. Please state your name and city residence for the record.
I thought I had a couple more minutes. What I wanted to say is I was listening all afternoon to C-SPAN Congress, and they were all there saying how it's the law of the land. 1982, this country passed a law saying that the federal government had to take the radioactive waste off of all the hands of all the nuclear power plants in the whole country. Well, guess what? They're still complaining about it. 1982 to now. So we now have a law passed down by the state government saying you guys have to do such and so, and it's the law of the land. And the developers here are just going to love that. I think they're just going to love that. We have to do this. The state is telling us we have to do this. And I think it's a scare tactic, and I think they're trying to take away our local authority. And I hope that you will do everything you can to make sure that Measure E is not circumvented. I voted for Measure E in 1996. I'm a landowner, homeowner here in Thousand Oaks, and I expect to be able to vote if the housing units are exceeded. So I hope that if you ever are asked to vote on that issue, you'll let me have my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Next, I have a card from Ms. Marilyn Carpenter. Welcome again. Good to see you as always. If you could please state your name and city residence for the record.
Hello. I'm Marilyn Carpenter, a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. As I read the materials that you were given in preparation for the meeting, it was slim, actually, not a lot to read. I was struck particularly by something that said we haven't had a comprehensive general plan review since it was initiated in 1970. All those general plan review committees that I served on over the years, I'm wondering, where are the records of those meetings and the decisions that were offered at that time? So I really would encourage staff and commission first to seek and staff to provide records of all of that review that has gone on. We've had attitude surveys every five years, statistically valid surveys. I would urge the commission so you're up to speed on what this community is about. Those are important things for you to know about CDBG, just from an old timer. And honestly, I've been here longer than most of you have been alive, truly. But CDBG process historically here has been, we had a committee that was convened, it had a council member or two, a planning commissioner or two, involved citizens, and community organizations who had worthwhile projects came to the CDBG committee with their proposals. And then the committee decided which of those were most worthy and how those funds would be distributed. It was like a pot of gold. We had money to distribute and we gave it to those who had projects that would benefit the greatest number. I served on the SCAG Regional Advisory Council for over 20 years, representing Thousand Oaks. That's an organization that listens to reason. I'm assuming that's where the mandate for numbers comes. Is that right? That's where the RENA numbers come from SCAG. And I'm assuming they still have, not a regional advisory council, I believe they don't have that anymore, but there are representatives, city representatives, county representatives who serve there, who if we have questions, should be able to at least consider them and address them. We're not, I think, bound to accept what the state is mandating without raising some questions and certainly without a clear understanding of what our history is. I really commend you folks for the thought you've given this, but really would urge you to look a bit at our history. Look at our general plan. Look at those attitude surveys. Look at the reviews that have been done every five years until, I guess, we ran out of money to do that. But there's information there that I think would help you as you deliberate in this very important role you play. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Always appreciate hearing from you. I do have a follow-up question from her comment, Mr. Gilli. When it does come to general plan review, I know you're always very thorough in the staff review as far as point of origin, history between then and now, and giving us a little track as to what has evolved in the intervening years. Would that include such things as committee reports and steps that have been taken in the interim that might give us some insight as to what that next general plan would look like?
Yes, yes. And the distinction between what the speaker is discussing and what was put in the staff report is a comprehensive general plan update is when you look at the entire document, all of the elements, and consider the full range of all issues and do one update to the whole document. We have updated most of our elements on a regular basis, but they haven't always been done in context of everything else. And the state encourages doing the more comprehensive approach. Doesn't require it, but encourages that. The general plan has an annual report. The next one is going to council, I believe, March 20th. There have been, as I said, certain elements that have been updated, and that's gone through public processes and involve subcommittees and so on. But the statement was about whether there was ever a comprehensive one that looked at land use, housing, circulation, open space, parks, all together, all at once. And so it's not that we haven't updated parts of the general plan.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli, for that clarification. I have no further public comments cards, our public speaker cards, see no flags from commissioners. And so just as a reminder, this was a study session only, not a public hearing. No decisions to be made. Our direction was to receive the report and discuss the topic. We have done both. So we are now through with this item. And I believe what I'd like to do prior to moving to the next item is take a short five-minute break so the commissioners can get a quick break in here. And we will reconvene in five minutes. Thank you. 5th, 2018. We'll reconvene, continuing on with our department reports. Next is Department Report 8B. And I'll ask Mr. Gilli to introduce us to that next study session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is also a study session to provide an overview of conceptual project issues for a proposed 19-unit project. Specifically, we'll be talking about applicable state law, building heights, and oak tree preservation. No formal action will be taken. And the proposed site is 271 Herb's Road. So on the screen is a map of the area. It's a half-acre parcel. On one side is multifamily housing. On the right side, on the left side is a single-family structure that is used as a preschool for the church. And then on the other side is, that preschool is a two-story apartment over ground-level parking, so we'll say the equivalent of three-story also. And this is along Herb's Road, very close to where we are now, between Hillcrest and Teo Boulevard. We're bringing this item forward as a study session, which is very unusual because it has a lot of applicability to the housing law that we recently discussed, in particular, the Housing and Accountability So in past review, what we would do is we would try to balance a number of issues, not just the three shown above, this is a simplification, but just for the sake of conversation, we would have tried to balance the number of units with preserving a very mature, a mature, very healthy oak tree on the site that's in good shape, and the compatibility of the project with the surrounding area. What's happened now is the Housing Accountability Act has taken away our ability to discuss the number of units. Once again, unless we can make a specific finding. So before that rule, that law took effect, we would have been on completely strong legal ground to say, we want to preserve the tree and your building is too tall, so why don't you just maybe take off some of those units? That was normal operating procedure in Thousand Oaks and probably most of the state. Every other community I've worked in, it had that type of approach. But now with the Housing Accountability Act, we can't reduce the number of units. We can talk about certain things like how big are they and such, but we can't talk about the number anymore. Then on this particular site, due to the unique characters of this site, we can't even bring to you an alternative solution that is the sweet spot where tree preservation and compatibility overlap. So on this diagram, we have to actually pull those two circles apart. If anyone on the commission or the public has an idea of how we can make that work, we are happy to hear it. But based on all of the approaches we've looked at, we don't see a scenario where we can address both of them as much as we think they need to be addressed. So we asked the applicant to provide us with a couple cross-sections. This is the cross-section of the project. The street is to the far right. And then you have a minimal setback and you have a 50-foot-tall structure. Four stories of residential above parking that is exposed on Herb's, but then eventually is mostly underground. The building effectively stops near the drip line of the oak tree. Then on the next example, this is a cross-section we asked the applicant to provide. Their original application was the prior. This is what the project could look like on the site if the oak tree were not present. There could be a greater setback on Herb's, and the building along Herb's can be brought down closer to 30 feet and step up. down closer to 30 feet and step up. And roughly speaking, this would fit more with the compatibility of the surrounding area. So this is a photo of the site. The site has a lot of vegetation on it now that would be proposed for removal, except for the oak tree, which is still in question. As you can see to the immediate right, that's two stories of housing over tuck-under parking, so it's effectively three stories. If we work to save the tree and the building, in order to allow them to have the number of units they're talking about, the building along Herb's needs to be 50 feet. You're basically adding two extra stories. Just imagine that building over on this side with two extra stories on it. Next. Then looking on the other side, once again, this is a two-story apartment building over tuck-under parking. This is bermed up a little bit, though. But if this project on Herb's were to be allowed to take the tree out, they would have a height that is roughly proportionate to that apartment building, but then we would lose the tree. And if you could go back to the first cross-section. So as I said, this is the cross-section of the applicant's original proposal. Because when the applicant came in for preliminary discussions with staff, we advised them to do everything they could to save the tree. At the time, we didn't know what that would mean, but they came back with this layout. We examined the plan. If we take the approach of preserving the tree, then clearly, we acknowledge in the report, that's one of the highest priorities of the city. The tree's in very good shape. If the building is built in this form, then most direct views of the tree will be blocked from the street, not all of them, but most of the direct views. As with any time you're building around a mature tree, the building is going to have the possibility of impacting the health of the tree. So we can't necessarily even say if we go the approach of save the tree and allow this form, that there couldn't still be some impacts to the tree that we can't foresee. Next. If we go the approach of removing the tree, then the building is much more compatible with the neighborhood, which is also a major priority. And it comes down to whether the commission believes the visibility of a taller or shorter building, where that ranks with respect to saving the very healthy tree or accepting multiple mitigation trees, possibly onsite and offsite. But it's a trade-off, and the trade-off comes back to the challenge of the Housing Accountability Act that says that we cannot deny or reduce the number of units in a project that complies with the general plan or zoning without making, finding that there's an unavoidable adverse impact on public health or safety. The site is in a general plan designation that allows a range of 15 to 30 units per acre. By law, that means it allows up to 30. 30 units per acre on the roughly half-acre site is about 15 units, but it turns out to be 14, I believe. And then you do the density bonus, and you end up at 19. We have very little ability to do anything to the project that is still not going to result in a very tall building on Herb's. I think working with the applicant, we may be able to reduce the, we may be able to step back the uppermost floor if we work with them to change some of the units into smaller units, but it's still going to be a 40- to 50-foot building on Herb's. And we have one written communication on this item from Coda, and it talks about many of the issues with this project. The challenge that because of the prior discussion and where we're at on the Venn diagram, we simply cannot talk about taking units out without clearly being in violation of the law. And thus, it's not a position that we can recommend. At this point, given all of the factors involved, we do think that the appropriate approach is to take the tree out and make the building more compatible with the surrounding area. And because of the nuances of not wanting the commission to say too much in detail about the project, we outline our recommendations so that you can either give us direction to stay on task or to go the other approach and try to work to preserve the tree. You don't necessarily need to say you like either, because this, to a certain extent, is a no-win. Yes, providing housing units is important, but this is the case of the one-size-fits-all state law that says you can't reduce the units. So the trade-off is, do we prioritize the oak tree preservation or prioritize neighborhood compatibility? If there is not a clear direction from the commission, our intent is to focus on the compatibility first. But in the end, there is no right answer, and so if there's a majority of the commission that wants us to pursue prioritizing the oak tree, we will adjust our approach in this review. And eventually, this project will come forward to the Planning Commission, will not go to city council unless it's appealed. As I said, the site is zoned and has a general plan allowing this. The proposed height is even allowed by the zoning. So staff's available for any questions and general discussion about these topics? And I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly. To start, I did have a question first. I noticed in the purpose statement, you indicate that this is a study session, is a follow-up to our prior study session earlier this evening, and no formal action will be taken. And then within the recommendation, it states to direct staff to prioritize neighborhood compatibility, or the alternative, to direct staff to prioritize oak tree preservation, which I'm not sure if that's a formal action or a recommendation or whatever. But then I also noticed that there's been, you know, trying clarification that while this project is being presented as an example, we're not really assessing this project per se. I was just maybe hoping the city attorney could maybe just kind of narrow this a little bit, give us some clarification, please.
Sure. As Peter mentioned, this is a workshop, as you articulated it is a workshop. So the first important factor is we are not judging either project tonight. There's no project in front of you to judge. I caution any of you to just be careful in giving opinions. Certainly, we're looking for direction, and this is a very difficult topic that we have before us. But this is not something in which we need to voice an opinion on how you would vote for one versus another. We're not at that, kind of at that stage. And in fact, we purposely did not give you a lot of details of each potential project simply because this is a workshop, and this is an example of what could be happening in the future with the housing laws that we have now. The other thing I just wanted to comment on is the density bonus. And an applicant, and I think the state is certainly encourages developers to do affordable housing, and to encourage them to do that, they give them opportunities to increase the density without being subject to the zoning that's there or other types of slow-growth measures that a city might have, such as Measure E. And in this case, as I just re-stated, they have a right to, based on the size, 14 units, and if they do density bonus to 35%, they get five more units. So they would be able to get 19 units if that's what they sought. And that's just an important factor in the sense of there are 19 potential units on this spot, and staff, in speaking to the applicant, just that'd be an opportunity, knowing that we have the housing law workshop tonight, to present this to you for open discussion, to get your thoughts. And we know it's a very difficult topic for, as Peter said, no-win situation, but it's also important that we kind of get some direction here. So we are presenting to you a project that you're going to have a full chance, if it comes before you, to review and comment on and examine and question and evaluate. But that's not before you tonight.
And on the specific topic of the direction, it would be simply what at least three of the commissioners state about the prioritization of the two issues. It would not be a formal action or anything like that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that because I know we are embarking on a new pathway here, and this is a test case, as you might say. And I know everyone will do their best to keep this at a conceptual level and just the issues at hand rather than the subject project that's there. And this is kind of a maybe introductory statement, and I know as we've had many cases come before us where we've had zoning issues at stake and the allotted number of units, whether it's the appropriate number, and we've talked about that a lot tonight as far as the number of units. In this case, it's zoned for 15 to 30 units. And obviously, if they want to maximize that, then having .48 acres, they would be entitled to 14 units. Now, of course, in our past life, we would be able to navigate through this process depending on oak trees and hillsides and everything else, and get to the number of units that we felt were appropriate. But just kind of keep this in mind as you go forward, as we talk about this, that we're in this new realm now with the new housing laws, and the number of units is no longer applicable here. So we're trying to define these constraints a little bit differently as we go forward. So we'll see how we do with that, and I'll start off with Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, thank you. Do we know how many of these units are low and very low income, and how many are at market rent?
Based on the density bonus law, they would have to only provide two units as very low.
And none as low income?
Doing the two as very low would be all they needed to do. So it would be too low, and then all the rest would be market.
Market, okay. And do we know the range of square footage, the average square footage of the different units that they're proposing?
Just for the sake of exercise, let's just assume it's a range that is diverse.
Okay. So I understand you to say that that height that they're proposing is legal in that area and in that zoning?
Yeah, the R3 district says that the height limit is 25 feet plus a certain amount for every additional feet you go up. And then it, so it becomes a formula that with a certain size setback, which we believe the applicant is meeting, they could have a 50-foot building.
Okay. So now, if they did the plan that left the oak tree there, I, it seems like you couldn't see much of it from the street. Who would enjoy the oak tree? Would it be just the people at the back of this apartment building? Would it be seen from the side neighbors, from the back neighbors? Or would the tree be hidden from almost everybody?
Can you go back to the aerial? So the immediate neighbors of the site would continue to enjoy the tree, the residents of the property would enjoy the tree. If you were across the street and possibly even at the front door of the units across the street, you might actually be able to see some of the tree over the top. As you get further away, your line of sight will allow you to see it. And then the side setbacks will provide some views as well, although there's the likelihood that those side setbacks are going to get some landscaping themselves. There will still be views, there will still be public views, but it will be reduced if a building of this size is placed in front of it.
It just seems pretty big. Okay, those are all my questions for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From a purely objective standpoint, the staff report just mentions the tree is healthy and mature. I feel like almost this is a game of guess who. We're trying to just get as much information as possible without getting the information. Is there any way, I mean, how did we arrive at is healthy and mature? Did we have our tree specialist go out and take a look and provide any update report, anything to that effect, or how did we get there?
We have a tree report from the applicant that we've reviewed and that our landscape consultant has reviewed as well.
Okay. And the landscape, so from the landscape consultant, this is how we've arrived to the healthy and mature?
From our landscape consultant.
From the city's landscape consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
And if the tree were not healthy, then
This wouldn't be an issue?
We probably wouldn't, yeah, yes. We wouldn't, it might come up somewhere else, but we wouldn't be bringing it up in this way.
We'd see it later when we got the project in the first place.
Commissioner Pletcher, if this helps, just pretend this is a pretend project and that the facts are as presented, because this is, we're not really assessing the project in reality, it's a pretend one. But it just so happens that we have some information on it. So if that helps, that's kind of the way I'm taking it.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, hey, if they said that's what it is, that's what it is, and try to approach it from the conceptual viewpoint. And I know it's hard not to get down into the weeds because we customarily do that, but that's what I'm trying to do.
It's being right back in law school again with hypotheticals, which we've had plenty tonight. You know, that's all I actually have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the first, or main question I had is, and I want to confirm this, so the direction that we're providing is only as to this one hypothetical project and not a, basically, statement for any future project as to how we would view them in terms of priority of issues, correct?
Agreed. And we want to be very explicit, and that's why in the recommendation says that the Planning Commission, for this particular case, direct staff, which to prioritize. In every other case, we are going to continue to do what the Venn diagram showed of trying to find the spot where we can get enough of both.
Okay. And, you know, personally, this feels a lot like I'm being asked to cut off my leg or my arm in that sense, and it's very restrictive. But let me ask you a secondary question. To the extent that we have less subjectivity in this process, is this something where the applicant come back and say, hey, I can choose which one I want at the end of the day?
Well, the applicant was given initial direction to do everything they could to save the tree and came in with a proposal that had the 50-foot height. And so the applicant has prepared a package for that.
But if an applicant wanted to come back with the, say, the higher building, are we in a position really even to say no at this point?
The applicant is extremely willing to do the other approach.
Okay.
I would say, just if I can chime in here, I would say that certainly an applicant can go and present the project they want to present and take their chances. We've seen it, once in a while, we have a case in which we, at the end of the day, staff and the applicant might not meet eye to eye. And so we're at a point where we say, you know what? Let's just bring it in front of Planning Commission and have them make the decision. And you've seen a few of those cases, I won't be specific, but we have those situations where we've attempted to work and always work in good faith, and then we're at a point where there's just one element that we just can't agree on. And so we say, you know what? Okay, we're ready to go. They go, I want to have my hearing, and we go forward. So certainly, there is that opportunity. I will say frankly, in working and meeting with the applicant to talk about this workshop, it was something new that we were trying to assist you in and also to assist staff, frankly, in. And he was, the applicant was gracious enough to consider taking some time to do this, to be fair to him and that team. And so that is something that you should know about. So we are in this challenging is something that you should know about. So we are in this challenging spot where we have the height, we have the tree issue. I will also state though, that we've had other occasions where we look at these tough decisions, right? In the last meeting we had, we had the parking lot. And if you remember, the parking lot next to the assisted living facility. And in that, we had to, we made some decisions about, we're supporting the project, they're gonna have to remove a tree because it's in the way of this driveway area. But by doing that, by positioning it that way, we actually are saving some other trees in some manner. We're not always gonna have that perfect landscape or that option where we can fit and position the footprint of the building to kind of save everything. We can save, whether it's trees or some other element that we think is important to us. And this is a tough one because it is a very, you know, tight location and it does have one tree in it that is mature and obviously the subject of our concern.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One last question. I know we got the one piece of evidence as part of the supplement. Was there any other neighbor comments that you've received? We haven't seen any. I just want to make sure that this is the only piece of evidence we had.
We haven't received anything else in writing from anybody else on this project.
Thank you.
But I would presume nothing's been posted for the project either.
We did send out a notice to inform people who are around this area, but I do not know if we did a posted sign.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Lanson, anything more? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll follow up on Commissioner McMahon's questions about who would enjoy this tree. And in light of the chair's excellent point that this is a hypothetical project we're considering, if there were a hypothetical middle school behind this hypothetical project, would students and faculty at that school also see this tree if the five-story, 50-foot approach were adopted?
As stated, the properties that are around the property, the properties that are around this subject site, unless they themselves have a building close to the edge of this property, will and should continue to maintain very strong views of this tree.
Okay. Earlier, it said side neighbors. I'm not sure if that includes, or immediate neighbors, if that includes
The rear as well.
A school. Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying that. In the staff report, there's a paragraph on relocation. This is on page three. I'm not sure whether it's in or out of bounds to ask whether this applicant has made a request for relocation, if relocation is feasible, in general, whether when dealing with trees of this size, applicants are open to relocating trees of this size.
It is, it is commonly a conversation that we have. If the tree can't be preserved in place, can it be relocated on-site? If not on-site, can it be relocated off-site? Speaking from a hypothetical approach, a developer would have a very easy way of showing that the cost of relocating the tree is a significant expense towards the cost of the housing project. And under the density bonus law would have the very clear right to be, to request it as a concession. But at the same time, we have a process that allows it to be removed. So it's arguable whether it's truly a concession or not. But there's, at this point, we do not know if the tree, or let's imagine the situation is one where we do not have information from even our consultant that this is a good tree for relocation, particularly because it doesn't look like there would be a spot on-site. So if it is relocated, it would have to go off-site, which adds more challenge to it. But at this point, it's staff's view that relocation would likely have a price tag that would make it difficult to enforce. So replacement with, we think it's easier to negotiate with the applicant to get a larger number of replacements than we normally would. While it is an extra cost, it is certainly not so much of a cost that it would impact the construction of the project.
If the city's oak tree consultant does find that it's feasible to be removed, is there past precedent we can look to for trees this size? Where have trees this large and healthy been relocated? Is it close to the applicant's site? Is it far off in some open space section? What is the history of relocating large trees here?
That is unfortunately not information that we have. The, how far?
I will say that we've had a couple of projects. The Toll project, I think there was, I'm not sure if it came to planning commission, but it was one in which there was a renovation of his house. And as part of that, they did a relocation of five oak trees, but they were all on the property. And I know that we had a situation here where I think we had to relocate one of the trees that we had on our property. Maybe it was not, I think it was, if we did it, it was in the same general area. I can't think of one right now and I wish Mr. Town was here, but I can't think of one in which we had them relocate something of this size to a different location that was on their property itself.
Yeah, I'm not aware of one either in my time on the commission. I'll just close with a comment that I'm constitutionally allergic to there is no alternative types of propositions. There's kind of an element of a, I, well, I appreciate the staff being in a difficult position on this with two conflicting priorities here. I'm hoping that the commission, its staff can come up with a creative resolution that doesn't tell one of our children that they're better than the other, or uglier, or less academically gifted, or something like that. Commissioner McMahon made a good proposal in, on the prior item. I thought it was a great suggestion about asking about the size of units, not just the number of units. I'm hoping there's some leeway there. I'm hoping there's other forms of creativity we can apply to this problem. There's always an alternative and I hope we can come up with a good one here.
And I think staff certainly appreciates that. I will say that in looking at the size of the units and stuff, I just want to say from my point of view, I wouldn't be recommending a workshop or supporting the workshop if I thought that there was like a middle option. I think the 19 units speak for the size of the location, I mean, the size of the facility as a whole. Even if you make them a little bit smaller, it's going to be in the situation where at some point in time, the pro forma won't work out and now he's not permitting affordable housing and then we have that whole issue rise in front of us. So we're making that assumption that we have to have 19 units. We have to make the assumption that's gonna pretty much be similar to what we have been presented in the past. And with that, we do have, in this particular case, we have this situation where we're looking at, the alternative option would be, option one would be to have it as current with the five stories in front with the oak tree staying there. And the other option, obviously removing the oak tree and pushing it back a little bit.
Thank you. I have no further questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Go back to Commissioner McMahon.
If I'm interpreting this correctly, we are always gonna be looking at these projects on a case-by-case basis. But for this particular project, hypothetical project, the staff has gone through every imaginable iteration and option and cannot come up with something else. So we have these two alternatives to look for. In other projects, hopefully we can do, as my commissioner, fellow commissioner wants, is to find a meeting of the minds and another alternative and a working out. But I'm understanding that this particular hypothetical project creates a real problem and there really are only these two options. And that's why you want a sense of which way we lean when there are no other
If I may, on that choice, I'm unclear now whether, I thought earlier we had said that this was a hypothetical project. We're not speaking about the specific project at 271 Herbs. So I'm unclear then whether the priority we set tonight, if we do set one, if there is consensus on one, whether that applies to any future project where there's a conflict between oak tree preservation and neighborhood compatibility, or whether there, whether this is a decision about this specific application.
In my view, this is, this project can inform our review of future projects, but I don't believe it in any way holds you to doing the same thing for a future project that variables are gonna be different. If the tree were simply closer to the rear property line, we might be able to take a whole floor off, they get the unit, it's still a little taller than the neighboring area, but not two levels taller, and then we might not be here. But it's where it is. The tree might not be healthy. There's a variety of things, but in this, in this particular case, we can't come, because if you go, if you remember, you know, the diagram, the state took the thing that we would normally do away from us. Thing we would normally do is say, why don't you make it three stories and keep the tree? We can't do that. So, but if there's any other option that we could have found, we would have done that. So every future case is going to be a little different. The situation is gonna be a little different. And so I think, as I said, I think this can inform future decisions where we can say, this one had all these variables and we went that way. No project is gonna be exactly like this case. I mean, theoretically possible, but it's very unlikely a project's gonna be exactly like this case. So from staff's perspective, if we as a city decide in this case, the tree is removed, that is not gonna change our recommendation to applicants to always try to work around the tree. We want them to show us that they can't do it. This is a case where I think the applicant in very good faith came in and said, okay, I'll save the tree. Here's what the building ends up looking like. And staff, we said, whoa, that's tall. And so from the standpoint of future projects, regardless of how this case goes down, we are still going to emphasize the tree being kept and emphasize the neighborhood compatibility. And only if we truly can't find a solution, would we, would we bring up the idea of compromising between the two.
And Chair, if I may, and to Commissioner McMahon's comment, just I want to clarify, you know, staff has internally looked at the project that was presented with our initial direction. But we haven't gone into the incredible detail that we would do before we brought a project to you at this point. And of course, we haven't done it with the other option because that's not in any way before us or before you. So just to clarify, we have done a lot of work on this case in the sense of trying to evaluate it, but we don't have the specifics of, you know, every size. And because we got to a point where we said, wait a second, this is a significant issue here for us as staff to get direction from the planning commission. And then another factor, we talk about history. A lot of times developers come in, and not just for residential projects, but just for all kinds of businesses and other types of uses that we have in our city. And they go, hey, what does the city like about this? What does the city council act when they have this kind of situation? What does the planning commission, what's their history when they have this kind of project? They want to know about that. I mentioned wireless in the previous workshop. That's another one where they say, we tell them, hey, you know, if you have this type of project, we've had success in this type of project. But boy, if you throw it in their face and say, this is where it's gonna be located, or it's gonna be here or nothing, good luck with that, we're not gonna support it. You know, so we use the history that the planning commissioners have given us with their advice and their recommendations and their decisions to help guide developers who ask those questions. What do you think about this? What do you think about option one, option two, option three? So in a sense, when you give us guidance, we also use that for the future for other projects.
Thank you all. Don't see any other commissioners, so I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions here. Mr. Gilli, you were talking about the 50-foot height as being in compliance with the zoning based on a formula with the setback. Now, I noticed we have on the exhibit, Scheme A with the stacked units, for lack of a better term, basically, it looks like a box. Four levels of residential above one level of parking, which is 50-foot high. So are you indicating that the setback of that somewhat flat facade to the street meets the current setback that would allow for a 50-foot height with no setback of any first or second or third or fourth floor?
The setback requirement related to height is for the side setbacks. So what, we're looking at a cross-section, so the sides are not visible to us.
Correct.
So as you go taller in the R3 District, your side setback increases according to a ratio. And the original plan that is in this diagram of the 50-foot tall building, it looked very much like the side setback was met.
Okay. So in this, in this Scheme A, the front setback is met, the side setbacks are met. Obviously, the rear setback is met because you've got the oak tree remaining. The height is 50 feet, which is compliant with the zoning. The density of 19 units is compliant with the zoning because as of 14 units plus the five bonus. So there's nothing about that design that's not, that's not in compliant with our current requirements. Is that correct?
At the level of review we're at, the major requirements about setbacks and such and heights all look like they are met.
Okay. So now, when it comes to your photographs of the adjacent properties, those are obviously less, and less tall.
Yes.
They're two stories plus the berm, so they might be 30, 35 feet, something along that range. And in comparison to the neighboring properties, this would appear to be out of compliance. And so that when you're talking about compatibility, you're talking about driving down the street and making sure that all the development kind of resembles itself. Maybe it doesn't look exactly, but that it somewhat resembles and seems to fit as opposed to just saying, oh, it's compatible with our requirements.
That's right. When we're referring to the term compatibility, it's a case of, as you stated, if you're driving down the street and you see the two-story apartments over tuck-under parking, effectively three stories, about 30 to 35 feet, basically on either side, there is the preschool in between that is very short. And then possibly seeing something that is 50 feet.
Yes. So in this instance, hypothetical as it is, the proposed Scheme A proposal here, that design is compliant with all requirements. It's just the subjective review of it's not being compatible. And that's where we get into some of these subjective requirements is, it doesn't quite look like it fits, even though on paper it fits. And so then when you weigh that against saving the oak tree, is saving an oak tree also subjective? Or if that's part of our ordinance, we say, well, it doesn't comply with our ordinance because they're not saving the tree. So when I look at those two, I say, well, if the, if the structure complies in all regards, except for the subjective element of doesn't quite fit with everything else, and we can, and it's really not in violation with any other requirement of the, of the design. And I suppose you can get some of the articulation as you planning folks use as far as balconies and things like that to make it look a little softer. It seems to me like you ought to be able to have both, where you can have that design, have the number of units, keep the tree, and it fits all the requirements. It maybe just doesn't look like everything else, but if you soften it with the design, maybe that's where you start working with the applicant. Then in that case, maybe you can have something that meets all the requirements. Then in that case, maybe you can have something that meets all the requirements and maybe doesn't weigh so heavily on the subjective components.
And that, that is the point behind, uh, the discussion in the prior item about keeping your regulations and policies up to date and making them more objective. Uh, the, the, the observation of, of our regulations is that we have relied on discretionary review and had a set of regulations that allowed a wide range of flexibility, but we use that discretion to say, okay, you're next to these other buildings that don't go over 30 feet, you're proposing 50. Sure, you don't have to be 30 feet, but 20 feet taller? You know, the discretionary process gives the planning commission that ability. Now it is true that the state law is pushing us in a direction of not doing that, but there is still a public benefit in our mind of doing that as much as we can until we're able to address those rules. Uh, because I don't know that, uh, um, it, it, it is, when you look at a neighborhood like this, uh, does one expect, uh, a new building to come in and, and literally immediately be 20 feet taller in this, in the same district? And while it may be allowed, uh, I think that, that if we were to look at our ordinances today through the lens of where the state is, we wouldn't have the same height regulation or, or allowance there. And so, so the applicant can move forward with this if they choose to, uh, and meet almost every rule. Uh, at this point, it looks like they meet, meet the rules. The applicant is willing to do the other, and we want to give the commission the choice because you have an applicant willing to work with you. This is where you can use subjectivity because, uh, the applicant is willing. And a 20-foot shorter building up on Herbs might be worth it.
And, and I appreciate that, and I know, I, I'm just kind of reflecting back on some of the projects that we have had, or even I've, you know, tuned into some of the city council meetings. And when a site is proposed for, again, 15 to 30 is, is often the, the zone that this happens, is the opportunity is there to meet that 30-unit maximum, but it's always said, well, yeah, but don't think that you're always going to get that because there's, you know, we expect something additional in order to get to that maximum. But now that opportunity to dictate what that's going to be is no longer available to us. So I think you're absolutely right that, just as I was trying to point out, there's, there's nothing wrong with the design as far as meeting the requirements because it does meet the requirements and there's nothing we can say that it doesn't. It just doesn't look maybe the way we want it to with that particular neighborhood, but then that's the way we've kind of used that process in the past, and now we're faced with a new set of rules, and now how do we blend these together? And that's, that's obviously going to be a challenge as we move forward. Uh, let me just cup, cover a couple quick, uh, things here. So in, in getting to the discussion, you talked about this, it's a choice, it's a trade-off. It's, it's almost an either or, either protect the tree and allow the building height, or allow the tree to be removed so the building height can be compatible. You talk about lowering the height and setting back that top floor. Um, and what we've been talking about is this, this challenge where we have these competing and conflicting constraints that, that are kind of impose, we're getting squeezed from both sides where we used to have some flexibility, we no longer do. And so whether or not there's a compromise, and again, this is a test case we're kind of looking at, and you know, that may be the situation here, well, you know, maybe there is no compromise, it's, you've got to do one or the other. I think what we'd like to do is see if maybe there are some options to kind of explore that. But do you, do you foresee this as, as kind of moving forward, that we're going to be faced with these compromises or really an either or choice, and there really won't be a whole lot of room in between? Or do you see this as really a black and white decision process?
As, as the rules in the zoning districts and the general plan is now, uh, this could come up frequently on multifamily sites that have, uh, a number of protected trees, especially a large protected tree. One of the points of, of, uh, a lot of this discussion is, uh, the time may be ripe to start looking at our general plan, start looking at our, our zoning regulations, uh, big picture. Uh, there may be ways to craft general plan policies that allow us to take some of these constraints into account, that yes, this is your range, but in the general plan have policies that say, these are factors that could determine where you end up in the range. Those factors need to be objective, but we may be able to come up with some that could lead to this being a site that's not 30 units per acre. But that's down the line.
And I will also say that, um, you know, we're, we're at a state now where we're doing a lot more infill. And so, um, you've seen on, on Los Feliz, some of the projects there, we've had an apartment complex coming in, um, that was a single-family house, but a big lot. Um, and also, um, you know, we, we can't predict what the state's going to do. Uh, we've seen, I frankly have seen some, uh, very, um, uh, significant new proposed laws from the state, from, especially from the same, um, author as SB 35. And these are even much more significant as far as taken away in certain cases in certain cities where they, uh, uh, make it a requirement for maximum height, or a minimum height could be 85 feet and you couldn't do anything about that, or 55 feet depending on the street size. But this is an example of, right now, it seems like a very hot issue for the state, and they seem to be serious about pushing forward these type of things, uh, these type of, um, new laws and, um, uh, you know, it's hard to predict whether that steamrolling will continue, but, uh, if it does, I don't think it'll be anything other than more restrictive for cities.
Uh, thank you. And then I think just the, the last comment I wanted to make is, and I realize we've had many comments either in the previous study or tonight, all this is going to be case by case, that we're, we're trying to use this as a sample case, uh, to try and kind of feather some of these things out a little bit. But as I look at, uh, your, your recommendations to either support the staff intention to prioritize neighborhood compatibility, or the alternative is to, to direct staff to prioritize oak tree preservation, uh, I think I kind of tried to clarify the compatibility as to whether it's with the neighborhood versus our, our requirements as far as this particular hypothetical case. But I, when it comes to oak tree preservation, I, I look at this as more than just a tree. Uh, you know, we, we talk about trees as individuals, which they are, but so much of our community is about the, the habitat that surrounds us and the habitat that we are part of. And as we try to retain these trees, it's, it's, we're trying to maintain the heritage of our community. But I also realize that, just as Mr. Heer was talking about, we have infill projects where now we have an isolated tree that really is not part of a larger habitat as far as the native environment. But we've kind of isolated it and put fences around it, so to speak. And so it's almost as if it's not really part of a larger habitat, just a smaller habitat. So how do we preserve these little pockets? And, you know, if we, if possible, allow places like this to regenerate, to grow more oak trees? And so I, I think there's a little bit more to just the tree itself, but, but the site and to assess the site. So as we get to this type of a infill type of project, I think some of that information would also be helpful if it's the type of site that would support the ongoing, the ongoing growth of future oak trees, or if once this tree dies, that we're not going to be able to regenerate anymore. We might be able to plant something, but not. But I think some of that type of information would also be helpful as we get to some of these really tight decisions. Uh, I think, you know, that additional information would also be helpful. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, excuse me. This diagram, the scheme A, where you've kind of blocked out the height versus the tree and just showing us the 50 feet, I want to make the assumption that the building's not going to be just this big square block. There's going to be some, I guess it's called articulation, there's going to be some areas that will be in and some areas will be out, and it's not going to be just this, um, square thing.
We would, we would always prefer articulation and, uh, uh, step backs of upper floors, so on, and, and, and so forth. It's, it's, it's a tight site, uh, and, uh, admittedly, I don't know if we're going to be able to achieve the level of articulation we would normally want with, with the five stor, the, the five-story example. We, we will endeavor to do so. Uh, and we may get there, but I, I, I don't have certainty on that.
Anything else, Commissioner McMahon? Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to endorse, uh, your comments, Mr. Chair, um, regarding our trees as a cultural heritage and an ongoing cultural heritage that, um, we should be sensitive to. And as well, um, the comments you and Commissioner McMahon have made about using, um, articulation, other architectural means to, to, as itself a means of, of ensuring compatibility with surrounding areas. So I think to the extent I lean one way or the other on this, and you've asked for guidance, um, it would be in that direction. One more question, and I realize that you've gone through this exhaustively already, and I appreciate that. But I want to ask, on that point, if, if the commission consensus were to use architectural means to, be it articulation or anything else, to make a five-story project more compatible, more attractive, more, um, one with its surroundings, are there any other objective means that we haven't discussed that might be applied here, uh, that would both allow the developer to, uh, continue with this project and, and to preserve the very, well, very large oak tree that's here?
Uh, if, if the commission direction is to prioritize the oak tree preservation, then the staff focus would, would shift on making the building of this size as, uh, acceptable as possible. Uh, as far as other, uh, viable options to, to, uh, achieve the number of units and, 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 and protect the tree, uh, we, we explored as many as we could imagine and we didn't come up with anything. Uh, if we happen to come up with something, moving forward into the future where, where we do think both, uh, of the issues are addressed, we will happily shift, you know, to that. Uh, but whichever direction the commission gives, we will then make that approach as, uh, as acceptable then to the commission as possible.
I appreciate how difficult the choice this has been. Um, one other point, just very quickly, um, I think there was a question before about public notice. I, I did not see a sign out front, um, when I visited the site. Um, and perhaps public speakers tonight, either in oral or written comments, um, may have some ideas that, that might help achieve those goals. Either, either way, though, I, I do appreciate what a difficult choice it is for staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Uh, any fellow commissioners wish to come at this point? Not all, ask some, introduce the public. Okay. All right, with that, I do have a handful of cards here for some public speakers. I have two that say for questions only, although I don't know what questions they might address, but Samantha Leach and Alex Anamos are here available for questions.
And, and that's the applicant.
The applicant, okay. So they may have information on the project itself then, the hypothetical project.
If there were, if there were planning commission questions, they're available to answer.
Okay. Anything? Okay, we'll keep them on hold if something comes up. Okay, next would be, uh, Jack Konig, followed by Kaylee Sirway. Mr. Konig, if you would please just state your name and city of residence for the record, please, when you come to the podium, and you'll have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I'm Jack Konig. I represent Ascension Lutheran Church, which is the main, uh, neighbor there, and I'm an ex-president of the congregation. And, um, we just wanted to be known that, um, as the neighbor, we don't have any objection to the 19 units. Grant Brimhold, when he first designed this area, uh, came up with the concept that, um, religious institutions should be sort of a buffer between commercial and residential, and that's the role we've been playing, and that's the role we continue to play. We would like it to be within character of the neighborhood, though. And, um, we would let that up to you to do what's best to blend in to the neighborhood. And we just want to say that we want to be good neighbors, and we have no objection to it being 19 units. We hope some of the people will reside there and come to our church on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Konig. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next would be Kaylee Sirway, followed by Janet Wall.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Sirway. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm also the admin director at Ascension Lutheran Church and School. Um, we are excited for our new neighbors, um, and I appreciate Commissioner Newman's comments about, um, not being stuck in an either or situation, and just want to come to the table and speak perhaps with the hypothetical applicants about some hypothetical neighbors who might be interested in even if the tree could be transplanted, um, taking that on in some type of arrangement with them. Um, we do have the neighboring property. A tree is much more advantageous to a school and a community garden than it might be for an apartment building. Um, so that's something that we have not been approached about or, or asked about, but would be willing to open a dialogue about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting us out. Uh, Janet Wall, if you can please state your name and city residence for the record, followed by Nick Kidway.
Hi, um, my name is Janet Wall. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks for 32 years. Um, I'm also one of the principals of Coda, and you did receive our letter tonight. Um, I have to tell you, I don't really have comments prepared, and I, I like to come up here knowing exactly what I'm going to say. This is a very unusual hearing. You are being asked to make a major decision, in my opinion, without having the facts, the statistics before you. And I think it puts you in an impossible situation. We in Thousand Oaks, and, and I think I speak for a majority of our community, really care about height, visual impacts to our, our properties, but we cherish our oak trees. This isn't about, and, and I understand from Maryland that this oak tree can be seen from numerous sites above and, you know, around the area. It wouldn't just be something that would be blocked by this apartment. But our oak tree ordinance is a major part of who we are in this city. And for you to, to sit here and decide, okay, so you've got this silly little drawing that tells you nothing. I mean, yes, there, there's some, some lines here. You have no idea the size of the units, whether this can be something that can be changed. Um, it has, when I was on planning commission, there was no way that anybody was going to tell us that we had to maximize the number of units. And I'm understanding now that this is what is coming down the pipeline. However, um, I, I didn't see SB 167, AB 678, AB 1515 in your packet. So have you individually studied those and, and do you understand it? Or is it just, um, something, we have a new deputy planning director- Or is it just something, we have a new deputy planning director in town, and his ideas are coming from outside our community? So that's just something I want you to keep in mind. And I really do hope that you decide that this oak tree stays, even though you don't have any of the specifics, you don't have an oak tree report or anything else. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Final speaker is Mr. Nick Kidway. Again, Mr. Kidway, your name and city residence for the record, please.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Balkidway. I'm a resident since 1977, and director of concern, citizen of Thousand Oaks, for about 20-plus years. I also have no notes prepared, because this is anyway a workshop or study session. And as far as I can tell, this is the first time that the city has done a study session on an existing project, especially on a quarter acre of land for 19 units. Doesn't make any sense. I know you folks don't have a lot of business, but if you really wanted to do it properly, you should have been just completely hypothetical. Don't take, you are definitely talking about the small lot on Erbs, and you're scared that you might have to recuse yourself at the council meeting or at your planning commission meeting when it's on the agenda. I mean, it's very poorly done, as far as I can, in fact, I have a big complaint. I did not come earlier on, I was watching at home and working, is that on Sunday, I spent, seems like 10 minutes, probably it was six, seven minutes, to find your agenda. I mean, it takes, it's also true in the private sector. Uber came out five years ago, and the app was the magic, and it did not work perfectly, but it worked 90%, 85% of the time. Right now, their app is at 65%. So I think it's basically when you have people that have a job, and they need to do something to show that they are doing it. And that's what I mean, I don't know whose idea it is to completely fidget with the app, with the website. We spent a lot of money, I was one of the people that fought for it, to have these things broadcast, but I challenge you to get to the link that takes you to the meeting. It's just hidden away. I mean, and where are the archives? You cannot find them. I mean, if I spent 10, 15 minutes, I would be able to find them. It's, please, for God's sake, do something about this. One of the problems is that you folks don't use the website, because you don't have to, generally, because you get everything in writing plus links, et cetera. But the average citizen should be able to navigate it and find out what is happening. Regarding this issue, the thing that bothers me, and bothers a lot of people, is, I mean, I don't know, I heard this thing, I think somewhere in my work, about common sense. Common sense should prevail, and that's the thing. We have people on extreme sides. I mean, it makes me cry, literally, to see all the homeless people. I went to my hometown of Fullerton and took the exit of Lemon, of Harbor Boulevard, that's where Carl Junior's headquarters is. And that whole hill, it's bigger than this, has probably 40 tents. These people are not camping and enjoying themselves, they are homeless. So, in 1965, when the city was formed and all that, we had a lot of luxury. I mean, jobs were plentiful, people were not, now, people are struggling. Most of us cannot buy the homes that we live in, we're lucky. And some of the people want to not keep, actually, we have bananas, you know, NIMBYs, I was a NIMBY, I'm a NIMBY, but bananas build absolutely nothing anywhere. And we are talking about one oak tree, sure is precious, but we are talking about 19 or 25 or 30 families being able to stay away from this cold that we have right now, being able to have a meal inside and do the homework for the kids. I mean, that's much more important to me than any oak tree. And that doesn't mean that I'm being paid by the developers, or I don't care about the environment, but you have to draw a line which is reasonable, and this is not reasonable in this day and age to, in fact, the 50 feet, I mean, it's, Erbs Road is not, it's kind of a main road, but it really is not. It's not Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Moore Park Road, or Borchard Road. So, I know they have done this before, is that you stagger it, that in the front, it might be 45 feet or 40 feet, but you put two units in the back that nobody sees. And that's two families being able to enjoy the quality of life of Thousand Oaks. In fact, a survey came out that California has the worst standard of living, and we need to change that. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a good day. Do something about the website, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Appreciate your comments, as always. I have no other public speaker cards, I have no other commissioners here. I did have a question regarding parking, Mr. Gilly. I realize we have a below grade under the unit parking structure here, parking level. It probably wouldn't apply to this too much, but when it comes to calculating parking for an apartment or mixed-family project, mixed-family dwelling, multifamily dwelling, and mixed in with some low or very low units, is there any distinction between parking or is it a unit, no matter what type of unit is, requires the same type of parking? Or is it the size of units, whether it's one-bedroom, studio, two-bedroom, three? How is the parking determined, and would that affect this type of a project in any way?
Mr. Chair, based on the fact that the applicant is asking for a density bonus, the applicant has the opportunity to use the parking standard that is in state law. Our city ordinance does have varied parking ratios depending on the size of the units. For the purposes of this discussion, the larger the footprint of the building, the easier it is to get closer to the city's parking standard, whereas the smaller the footprint of the building, the more likely we will have to depend on the state density bonus standard, which is less than what the cities would be.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had on parking. No further commissioner comments? Okay, and with that, just to remind the commission, that again, this is a study session, no formal action. The staff has provided a couple of options as far as any recommendations, and Mr. Gilly is indicating that while we're not really voting, if he hears a particular support for one or the other alternatives, that they would lean that direction. Not that anybody has to support one or the other or neither, but if anybody had anything to say at this point, as far as their way they'd want to lean, again, not for this specific project, but just when it comes to looking at these types of issues as we move forward, I'll allow anybody who wants to weigh in on that to provide into Mr. Gilly and staff. Mr. Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was a little, not surprised, but very happy to hear that you have the Ascension Lutheran Church willing to at least explore and open up a dialogue regarding that tree and moving the tree, and based on the hypothetical tree. And based on the staff report, they do mention the extreme, the cost involved becomes one of the larger issues, especially when you have a large tree. So, you know, I'm certainly not, I'm just throwing it out there, it would be nice to explore that dialogue between the applicant and the church, as well as maybe have city staff sit down and facilitate that dialogue and see if something can be done, because I think that then allows the other issue to possibly resolve itself, to where you have some consistency, little bit better subjective consistency with the feel and look of the neighborhood. You know, so that's, I mean, that's my two cents. I mean, I'm very proud and impressed that they stepped up and at least are willing to enter into that conversation, because that goes to show that the neighborhood cares about the oak tree, but also cares about their new neighbors. And, you know, I would certainly encourage that, and maybe ask staff to kind of help facilitate that and see where that takes us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Pletcher. Commissioner Newman?
Yes, I want to endorse Commissioner Pletcher's comments, and also commend the Ascension Lutheran Church for being such a good neighbor. And I hope there can be more dialogue and discussion about possibly getting that tree moved, which, as Commissioner Pletcher says, would essentially solve itself regarding the dilemma that we're currently in. I also want to agree with Ms. Wall's comments, that it is a bit difficult for us as a commission to try to make a decision without having all the salient facts in front of us. And that is the situation we find ourselves in tonight. We don't know, because there hasn't been a formal oak tree study by the city's oak tree consultant, we don't know what articulation, if any, would be put on the proposed structure. We don't know what the proposed structure is or where it would be. There are a lot of unknowns here. And given that, I wonder whether it's even appropriate for us to be discussing a choice between A and B, and thinking, there is no alternative, we have to choose one, when there are all these unknowns up in the air. I hope there can be a discussion between neighbors, I hope there can be a way to resolve this. Honestly, I'm really not trying to kick the can down the road here. I am saying, everyone involved, the applicant, the neighbors, and we, the staff, we as a commission, should have all the facts in front of us when making a decision. And so, I guess I'm asking the question, would it make more sense to make this decision at a later date and in a more formal setting? That's all I have. Thank you.
If I may, Chair, just.
Yes, please, Mr. Heer.
For this workshop, for this hypothetical situation, we are making assumptions. We have to do that for you, because we're in a position where, we wouldn't be here if we could bring both of them, in a sense, to you with more information, without going through a lot of costs and time to do that. So, the assumptions are going to be that it's going to be 19 units, we have to assume that. That's with the density bonus of five. So that's an assumption that we make. As is two sketches, we're going to assume that's going to be one of the, either one of those two things. It's going to be the 50-foot height in the front with maybe some articulation, but it's going to be 50 feet with that type of block position there with the setback, as we've discussed. The second option is the sketch two, is going to be with the tree being removed. So those are assumptions that we are asking all of you to assume for purposes of the direction that we're asking for, because that's kind of where we have seen the project, the two options that we've had. So those are some key assumptions that I think are important to have for tonight.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just in response, on Mr. Heer's first point, I don't think that's a matter, the number of units is in dispute. No one tonight has suggested, let's do fewer units. Indeed, as item 8A laid out, that's no longer a choice available to us. I would challenge the premise of the second assumption, that our only choices are chicken and fish. There may be a third way. There may be a way to get to that second sketch without removing the tree, simply by transplanting it to a neighboring site or some other solution. I don't know, at this juncture, and with a lot of facts not in play yet, whether it's appropriate for us as a commission to say that those are the only two options available to us.
If I could comment, Mr. Chair, I think the key point that needs to be very clear is, when faced with the idea of a 50-foot building on Erbs, when there are public concerns about that even being on our boulevard, we would be remiss in thinking, oh, it meets all the rules, let's just process it. If we go through the process of just, with this layout, with keeping the tree and it being 50 feet tall, your hands will be tied at the planning commission hearing, because the applicant will have invested so much in that plan set that they will have a case, you know. So, we wanted to bring this early, to find out where not only the commission might stand, but also hear from the public, because normally, we would only hear from the public at the very end when everything's worked out. So we're at a more transparent approach. Yes, you're asked to make certain assumptions, but I ask the question, why would we bring something like this if we really thought there was a third option? If, whichever approach that you take, if the applicant and another party are able to work the tree out, then great, it is solved, and we're done. You have to accept there's a possibility that won't happen. And so, what we're telling you is that the staff's view is that the 50-foot tall building, we think, is a bigger community issue than the tree. That's not something that can be proven, so we want to hear from you. Are we wrong? Because if we are, then we'll adjust it, and we'll work with, and make the tall building as acceptable as possible, and keep the tree. But if we were to move forward with our professional judgment, it would be remove the tree, and had we not had this discussion, and particularly, if more of the commission agrees that, hey, let's keep the tree and just find a way to make the building work, we would have missed out on a major opportunity by not having this type of discussion. Now, we have no intent of having these type of meetings on a regular basis. It's, this is a case that when we saw it, we were worried that whichever approach we took was going to be highly controversial to everybody involved. So, we wanted to have the discussion early. We are asking for you to stretch and look at, you know, we can't analyze all the facts, admittedly, we don't have them all yet.
Right.
But the project meets our rules, and so if it comes forward with the tree at 50 feet, it meets the objective rules. And we would have possibly, unless the applicant wants to be very gracious and agree to redesign, at that point, we could possibly be stuck in a case. So, our approach was, let's err on the side of talking upfront, and airing the issue, and getting public input. And so, that's why we're here.
So without disagreeing with anything you've said, I agree 100% with all the facts of the cases you've laid them out here. I'm still unsure that it's appropriate to make a decision at this juncture, but that in no way takes away from my appreciation of your willingness and staff's willingness to bring this before the commission tonight at this juncture for a discussion. I think that discussion is a very constructive thing to do. I think it's very useful to have input from the public and from commissioners. That said, this commission is not a rubber stamp. We don't automatically approve things at this juncture or at any formal hearing. And there have been plenty of cases where either we all went into a hearing thinking this is a sure thing, and in talking it out, it turned out not to be, or it got turned around the other way, or came up with third ways that none of us contemplated walking into a meeting. So, I guess what I'm saying is, in process terms, not in terms of the discussion, which I think is quite good, but in process terms, while I appreciate your need for guidance at this juncture, I'm not sure it's appropriate for this body to make that decision at this point without having more information and more input on whether there are some other possibilities. And again, I understand how hard you've tried to work out that there might be other possibilities. I'm just saying, to have kind of a pre-vote, that's not really a vote, but it really is a vote, at least in my opinion, that... a vote, at least in my opinion, that is not appropriate.
And just to make sure we're clear, there is no vote, there's no... We're just asking for a direction to bring a project back to you. You have every right to look at the project and make your decisions. As you said, it's no sure thing. You're going to be looking at the projects as a whole with all the information like we would with any project. But just to be clear, we're not seeking any opinion on one of the other projects. We're seeking kind of direction for which option to kind of review and bring back if the applicant desires to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Thank you. I recognize how hard this is for the staff. It's hard for everybody. And I appreciate that you brought it before us and the public, just to get a sense of where to go with this. So I'm not going to make a decision, I'm not going to... What I want to do is just kind of think out loud, because I think that's more what you want, is to hear how we feel about this. First of all, I think it's an amazing opportunity if the church will take the tree, but there's two possible hiccups.
Or three.
First of all, will the tree survive the transplant? And so we need to investigate that. The second is the cost, and it's a big, beautiful tree. Can we find a way to make that work? And I thought, well, just I'm always trying to find solutions. If we could have some sort of a fundraiser to help with the cost, you know, maybe Coda and the church could do some sort of community fundraiser if the cost is excessive, and we don't even know that. We're just, everything, nothing's definite, nothing's confirmed. So if we come together as a community to make this tree in a schoolyard where it will be happier, I've said that word before with reference to trees, I like the trees to be happy. And if it's kind of stuck behind this residential units, it's not going to be as happy as if it's in a big school churchyard with all the kids and more people to be able to enjoy it. It's, that's my opinion. So when we didn't have that option, I went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, and I just, I could see positives and negatives for both situations. So first, I really want to explore how we can move that tree safely to the church and make it a community effort, whatever. If the arborist says it's just not likely to survive, then we have to look at it in another way. And I'm leaning, because Erbs is a wider street, it's not a 40-foot residential street, I'm leaning more towards keeping the tree if we can't move it and making the building as pleasantly compatible as we can. But I'm not going to say that's that. I would want to see what came before us again. But those are my thoughts, for what it's worth.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lanson?
I'm not a big fan of no-win options either, and I think all of us are hemming and hawing and having it the hardest time because we all have a deep-seated fondness of trees. I actually, on my property, lost a tree that was very dear to me, that I planted with my son recently. It had termites, and I had to take it out, and it was a very emotional thing to have to see that have to go. What I was looking for in terms of guidance, in terms of looking at this, was actually our city council a little bit, in terms of looking at how they've reviewed things recently, especially the pre-screening process, looking at connectivity, trying to look at an overall concept of what our city was designed for. It's not, you know, has lots of different points of light, so to speak. And also, what I would think if I lived there and I sat in a property actually on the other side of the street for about an hour, watched the traffic go by and kind of looked exactly what it would be. I'd love to keep the tree. The tree is awesome. It is a fantastic, beautiful tree. Same point, I don't want to live next to a, right in front of a four-story, five-story building. I don't know. I feel a little more of an obligation to the people that would have to live there, knowing they have a huge obstruction on their property that doesn't connect with the other buildings in the area. Again, I would love to keep that tree. It's absolutely, it almost looks like our city symbol. I mean, it's perfect. But it's such in a weird area. There's so much space on the other side of the tree over to the property line that it's just kind of sitting in the middle of nowhere. So, you know, I'm not saying that I'm going either way in terms of a hypothetical situation, but I like the idea of connectivity, I like the idea of having our city have a uniformed concept. And by the way, I want to make sure we focus on something. The applicant here is giving us an opportunity. We don't really have this option if they don't want us to. So this is actually something the applicant is giving us a choice of, which, yeah, it's not a great, fun choice for us to deal with, but it is a choice all the same that we actually get to have an involvement in, which ordinarily, we may not. And to be honest with you, if we don't take that opportunity to at least discuss the issue, many other applicants may say, I'll just do what I want, and I can force the issue, and you guys have no involvement in the process. So if we do this now, at least try to work with the applicant so there's something that is connected to the rest of the community, it sends a precedent to other developers who hopefully want to work with us on a way that actually makes our city look like we want it to do, as opposed to all of a sudden, building these high rises all over the place. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I keep coming back to what Mr. Gilli said earlier, is that staff has explored all options, and, you know, we're here tonight strictly because we need to check Box 1 or Box 2. And, you know, but I think the more benefit to what tonight brought is it brought the community out to propose Box 3 and a plethora of other boxes, should some of the other community members have made it out tonight. But just focusing on Box 3 for a second, Box 3 to me shows that all the options have not been exhausted, and, you know, you're asking, you know, you're asking to check Box 1 or Box 2, but this third box, I mean, I think needs to be explored and needs to be, you know... And maybe that shows that maybe the applicant hasn't done enough community engagement to see what other options are there and what other options are available. Maybe the theoretical applicant has, but I just can't be asked, in my opinion, to make a decision when we have other options on the table. And that's not to say that in future projects, you know, maybe we could make a decision that night, but at least here, looking in theory, all the options have not been explored. I would like to explore these options. And I think really, when it comes to what can be used in the future, whether it's informative or not, we still are, we, you know, Commissioner Newman said, you know, we're not a rubber-stamped body, we're not a rubber-stamped organization. And I personally think whatever we would do tonight would have very little value on the future because there's so many other variables to each individual project that come before us in any stage, be it, you know, this early planning stage, or when we see full reports and, you know, the front side, backside, and all sides, and setbacks, and we get the full tree reports, and, you know, each one is done on its own merit. And, you know, so, I mean, very respectfully, I disagree with the notion that anything decision we'd make tonight is informative on future actions. And, you know, I still would like to explore this third idea before we come back and have to pick that, those first two boxes. I just don't see how, you know, I don't know if it is a matter of information, as Commissioner Newman said, but I just don't see how we can make that choice tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pletcher. I've been jotting down a few notes and thoughts while I've been hearing my colleagues here. First of all, I learned about these new laws in preparation for the session for the first time. So this is all very new to me. I presume it's fairly new to the rest of the commissioners as well, and the implications as well, particularly with some of these issues that we faced in this particular second study session. So it's a relatively new process and still processing, personally, what the implications are going to be. And I actually believe I would have preferred a truly hypothetical situation without any specific addresses or whatnot to tie it to. I think we would have had maybe more open discussion, I'm not quite sure I can guarantee that. But I think I provided a number of thoughts, some input on the various options, whether it be the structure, the requirements, the code compliance, the zoning compliance, the oak tree, the habitat, a lot of the different concerns I have, both sides, both options that were prepared. Not really seen a whole lot of preponderance of support for either option. We've kind of ducked a little bit about it. I don't think anyone's particularly sold, you know, I'm just voicing my observation, not really state, I don't want to state for anybody else. But something I did really hear, but I would want to consider is, for example, as we've talked about, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, there's a specific plan there where the idea is that there will be a movement afoot to continue to see development on the boulevard over time. Erbs Road, I don't necessarily see that. You know, as I say, we may have, there's just a couple of spots there, we may have a few more projects. But when it comes to, you know, changes, I'm thinking, well, Mr. Gilli said, yeah, maybe the building height would be the wrong way to go because it's opposed to what we're normally doing, but isn't that what we're going to be faced with here on out? I mean, maybe this is just project number one of many that are going to be higher than we've ever had before and really higher than we want, but that's what we're faced with. That's the challenges before us. You know, some may lean one direction, some the other. But I'm getting the feeling that we're kind of on the cusp of seeing a different way of development than we've seen before. So while we may not support it, we may not be able to do much about it. So, you know, as I continue to weigh those, I may even thought of things like, well, trees are a renewable resource, but healthy, mature, native oaks in the Caneo Valley are a rare commodity. So you have to weigh those types of things as well, you know, whether it be site-specific or not. So as I've kind of weighed all that, I think the predominant thing for me is I'm just not prepared to land somewhere because it reminds me of a conversation I had with a young lady who I'm very close with, who said, you know, the guy I've been dating asked me tonight, if I were to ask you to marry me, what would you say? And she said, you'll just have to ask me and find out. And that's kind of the way I feel here. It's like, I don't want to, you know, have a case before, is to say, hey, when we bring this case to you, what are you going to decide? And that's kind of the way I feel like it. And I know we've been given specific information that this is not a specific case, but, so I said, I think I've provided input on some of the criteria that we've been discussing, and that's what I want to leave on the table, is some of those thoughts. But I'm not going to, I don't feel I'm in a position to say I support alternative one or two, just some of my concerns with the different issues, concepts, ordinances, requirements, laws that we've been discussing. And I see this as also coming to the board itself, to the commission, a case-by-case analysis. As they come to us, we have all the facts, we make the decisions. I understand this really is maybe not the answer that particularly Mr. Gilli was looking forward to, but I think that's kind of where I'm landing, is just, you know, when I have it all on the table, and when I get a better understanding of these laws and how they relate to our current requirements of what we can and can't do in the future, and when I see the specifics of the case, then I can land somewhere and make a decision. But I'm not prepared to do that tonight. Any further comments? Or Mr. Gilli, yes, please.
I think it'd only be proper to inform the planning commission and the public the direction that staff is going to take, since we have to pick one. We're going to focus on retaining the tree or relocating. If we can't find a way to relocate it, it will be to retain and come up with a project that, a building that is as, make it as positive as possible.
Thank you so much for the time tonight on both of these study sessions. I know we've got a couple of items yet to wrap up, but particularly, I wanted to thank the public for coming tonight and staying with us through the whole night, three and a half hours. I hope you got your money's worth. We certainly appreciate your staying here, your comments, and look forward to future comments as well, because this is a new pathway for us, and we appreciate your being the initial group to provide input on that. Okay, with that, I will move on to item number nine, commissioned comments and AB 1234 Commissioners, any comments or reports? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No reports, but I did want to congratulate our own Hater Alawami for his recognition at the Evening in Wonderland by the Caneo Chamber of Commerce. I myself had another engagement, I didn't have the opportunity to go, but just seeing his diligence throughout not only what has come before us, but also through his interaction with the bid, and I know of the stories of him going out and working with business owners and always trying to work hard to promote the city the best way he knows how. Certainly well-deserved, and I just wanted to pass that along if the commission didn't know that, but also to offer my congratulations to him, very, very, very well-deserved. And then I just had a comment based on, let me find it. Actually, Coda's letter mentioning the Lupe's project, you know, I thought, and I wanted just to bring it to city staff's attention, I mean, are we going and how are we observing and what are we doing at the Lupe's project to ensure the trees are being maintained and cared for properly according to what we previously voted on? I'm just curious, have we done any follow-up or...
I'll just say that that's really not on the agenda tonight, that issue, but I will say that we have reviewed the report that we received or the letter that we received from them, and we're looking into it.
Okay, that's really, sorry, I didn't mean to get very specific, that was really all I wanted to know. But other than that, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lanson?
Yes, just briefly, I have an engagement, so I won't be able to be here for the meeting on May 14. I just wanted to let staff know in case there was an issue for that. Thank you.
Thanks for the heads up, appreciate that. I see no further, so we'll move on to item number 10, staff update. Mr. Gilli, do you have any updates for us?
It's just that we do have items scheduled for both the March 19 meeting and then the April 10 meeting. We originally were going to have items for April 23, but for interesting calendaring reasons, we also have a meeting on April 30. And I think it's tied to the fact that council actually is meeting two weeks in a row, and the planning commission meeting is always tied to the council meeting. So we're going to, we do have items scheduled for April 30, but we do, we intend, unless something comes up unforeseen, to not have the meeting on the April 23. And that's all staff has to update.
Thank you very much. Hearing or seeing nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to March 19, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Thank you all for joining us tonight.